Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 9th, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. I call the meeting to order and it's being recorded and aired live by LCTV as well as being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Our clerk is officially delayed coming to the meeting. I don't know if anyone wants to step in and note the correspondence that we have that's recorded?
Sure.
Thanks.
The following correspondence will be recorded in email letter dated October 2nd, 2008, from Dr. Mr. Donald Jarvis of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative regarding the Student of the Month for September 2018. Long Meadow students honored are Joseph Plazak, Building/Property Management, and Austin Munson for Integrated Occupational Prep.
Thank you, A.J. We next move can, we will next move on to the approval of the minutes and we do have a recommended motion.
I moved that the school committee approved the minutes to the September 25th, 2018 Joint School Committee Select Board Meeting as presented.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Motion passes. Can move on to visitor comments. Don't believe we have any this evening. Any school committee announcements or recognitions that anyone would like to offer?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
There was two reunions that were held recently. There was the class of 73 which had their, I believe it was 45th, if my math is correct. And they had the class of 83 which just did their 35th, I know that, at Timmy Dineen's place over in Springfield. So congratulations to both of them, I know it was a good time. And they had a tour of the high school on either Saturday or Sunday and they were, the feedback on what a great building it was came back. That class.
Yes, good to hear. Thank you for sharing that. Um, oh.
I'll act as the secretary until she's done. Is that okay for you?
Um, yeah, that's fine. And you can coordinate with Diane.
Okay.
No, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Our business with our guests tonight is, on our agenda, we have it noted as the Elementary and Middle Schools SEL report. However, this evening, I don't know if you wanted to give any information, tonight we're only doing the Middle Schools SEL report.
Yeah, pretty full agenda. So this is sort of will be the second in a series of presentations that we will make for the school committee and for the wider community on our efforts to promote the well-being of kids, which more commonly might be known as their, their social emotional learning. And so it's been an important focus of ours, kind of focusing on the needs of the whole child because we ultimately, we know that when we are attentive to those things that it's good for learning. And so we had talked about doing elementary and middle tonight, thought given the, given the importance of the topic, given the length of the agenda, that it might be good just to highlight what's happening at the middle school level. And I hope you see some common themes in relation to what you heard last week with the high school and I hope you'll see their presentation also reflected when the elementary team comes to the school committee, probably at your second meeting in October. So we'll, we'll welcome the gang up. We've got a good crew here, we're gonna have to make some room and we'll also do some introductions, I would say. So, thank you all for coming out. So as, as they're getting settled, what, what we're trying to accomplish here is to familiarize the committee, the community with some of the social emotional learning work that's underway, maybe identify some of our current practices, but also try to identify for you where we're seeing some progress and growth and then perhaps identify some growth areas for us as well. So that's been sort of the, the common framework that we've asked each of our grade level teams to, to address. So, thanks for having them. We appreciate the opportunity to share this great work with the school committee.
Yeah, I would just say thank you so much for bringing such a well-represented team and thank you so much for also coming up and accommodating our new configuration here. We recently changed the room and the first time that we did it, Principal Anders and his crew came from the high school and presented just as you were doing. And I did specifically ask Tom for some feedback on how that, that setup went and he was nice enough the next day to email and I'll share it with the committee and all of you, that he really felt for the first time in a very, very long time of presenting to various school committees in various towns, he had never felt more like welcome and part of a conversation. So we're really hoping that that's what we're creating here and we hope you guys feel the same as you present. So, thank you for squeezing in and working with our room configuration.
Can we start with some introductions of the team?
Sure. Neil Gahl, Principal at Williams.
Yeah, I'm Kim Jimmy, grade seven, English teacher at Williams.
Jocelyn Young, eighth grade, English teacher at Glenbrook.
Bridget Duley, Assistant Principal and Special Ed Supervisor at Glenbrook.
Kira Dudek, I'm the School Adjustment Counselor at Glenbrook.
Nicole Allen, Principal at Glenbrook.
I'm Megan Tucker, I'm the School Adjustment Counselor at Williams.
Nicole Paris Crowe, Assistant Principal and Special Ed Supervisor at Williams.
So we thought it'd be nice to just general reflections about social emotional learning, then go through a rather brief, brief, but yet in-depth PowerPoint on all the great things we're doing, really make this a celebration and then wrap things up by talking about directions we need to go to make things better. So, that being said, you know how much social emotional well-being is interwined with the academic performance in school? Knowing that we want to equip our students with the tools, as we do academically, to grow socially and emotionally, these necessary tools are taught through a systematic framework of Castle's five competencies.
Traditionally, in teaching, SEL has been evident through activities here and there, but we feel that it needs to be more intentional in our daily practice, not only through advisory, but through instruction in the classroom, after-school programs like clubs, as well as just basically school-wide.
We know how critical this work is and the relationships are the core to its success. We are committed at the middle school level to encourage a culture of connectedness, to continue to grow in the teaching of SEL. We are giving teachers time to work on this in the classroom and beyond through PD, department meetings, and faculty meetings.
We will share with you in more detail of what this all looks like at the middle school level, both at Williams and Glenbrook, and the representatives here will share some examples of what we're actually doing now in different areas of the schools. And we are also gonna end the presentation with where we're headed and what the ideas we have for the future in terms of SEL work.
Supporting the whole child.
So I'm gonna start with some summer work that was done at Glenbrook this year. On SEL, where we were really focusing on trying to start aligning even better with the Castle framework. So three staff members, Karina Tabin, myself, and John Wills, all chose a different area to focus on this summer. Karina looked at finding additional advisory activities to teach, practice, apply, discuss, and reflect on the five competencies with students during our advisory time. I focused on looking for ways to incorporate the five competencies into the regular classroom, into the day-to-day teaching of our individual subjects, branching out not just in advisory, but in day-to-day teaching. And John Wills started to focus on looking at ways to incorporate SEL into other parts of the school day, before school, during lunch, during explore box, you know, after school with clubs, as well as things like guest speakers and family and community involvement, and also starting to investigate what are ways to assess and evaluate our work with SEL. We, our team of three, after our work this summer, we met and then we shared all of our work with the entire staff at Glenbrook with an August PD. And I will be sharing some of the specific details of that work with you tonight.
Okay, and like Jocelyn, I too spearheaded some of the summer work at Williams. And two projects that I worked on this past summer were the Purposeful Planning for Advisory, where we really got started with our advisory integration with the Castle frameworks. And also because we were doing a one-school, one-book, summer reading experience, we worked together on developing cross-curricular type of activities that similarly integrated the Castle frameworks. To start, the advisory piece is probably the biggest piece that our group worked on. We had about five and a half people, one was there part-time, who were planning the work with us. And knowing and reflecting that SEL isn't new, that it's always been there, but that we have a major focus on it right now, the majority of our early work was spent on really reflecting and sharing best practices. And that sharing of best practices really helped us to kind of see like where we were, it gave us a little bit of a reflection as to where we are and where we needed to go. We knew that we needed a new website, ours was dated, to say the least. And so a lot of our work was focused on developing a webpage that was really purposeful. The webpage has a schedule of events for activities that are aligned to the frameworks and the frameworks are noted in the actual schedule of activities. We also took a look at providing teachers with some of the latest resources. So taking a look at the Massachusetts Curriculum Standard Suggestions for How to Integrate an SEL Curriculum is linked right on our website so that our teachers can go and they can just take a look at that and really get a good understanding of it, which we also are fortunate, fortunate enough to do during our faculty time. In addition to our calendar, we have, well, we saw that there were a lot of activities that we already did that had embedded within them the SEL competencies, the Castle competencies, but we also recognized too that there's a need for some more explicit direct instruction. And as part of the work that we did, we created a resource page that has numerous explicit type of lessons to work with our kids on during advisory, but they don't only have to be during advisory, they really, many of them are cross-curricular, like a poem that might work well in an English class, for example, that could similarly be used with an advisory group to talk about individuals' differences. When we took a look at the, both the explicit and the embedded, we felt pretty comfortable, but we also recognized too that there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And so that is ongoing during our faculty meetings, which is terrific to have our time spent really meeting on grade level, talking about our kids, what our kids' needs are. As you all know, middle school students are varied, let's say. And so our, our needs of sixth grade are very different from our needs of seventh grade and even from the beginning of the year in seventh grade, the students' needs are different from the end of seventh grade. So we're getting there. We're definitely getting there.
Could I just add one quick thing? At the end of last year, we had a really powerful conversation at one of the staff meetings or the faculty meetings where we talked about really the how, the how do we make this happen for Williams? And after debriefing and a lot of reflection, Mrs. Crowe, myself, and Mrs. now Tucker, we realized that we, we need to make this priority and make this the number one commitment going into this year. So we thought one of the ways in which we could do that is by honoring everyone's time and utilizing the staff meetings, the monthly staff meetings, to do this work. So, so far, so good. We've had two staff meetings, faculty meetings, where we have spent the bulk of the time focused on SEL. So, yeah.
And then as you can see too, in the current practices, the menu of activities, and it's, at Glenbrook, they had, had an advisory website that we modeled ours after. So thank you very much, Glenbrook.
Sharing, professional sharing.
Yeah, professional sharing, that's right. And, but having, having that now underway is helping us to get ready also for the variety of models that's listed up there as well. We have different teachers with different strengths and different, different weaknesses. So the models that we use to support the kids in the advisory classroom does vary. I can share my personal experiences. I was fortunate enough several years ago now to have attended a, gosh, it was probably about a 20 or 30 minute, I'm sorry, 20 or 30 hour workshop with folks from developmental design. And they have a program that kind of revolves around this idea of the circle of power and respect. And really, it is embedding the social emotional competencies into advisory practices, but they also carry over into classroom practices. And so through the work that we did over the summer, I shared many of the practices that are used there. It starts with a greeting, a personal greeting, to acknowledge everyone, to welcome everyone. We do shares where we have special topics and we share our thoughts and our feelings about it. And they could be fun, but they can also be fairly serious too. And just, that also helps for us to learn and develop our good skills for being good listeners and good speakers. We talked about community building and using some purposeful games for building a sense of a close-knit community, members who respect one another, are kind to one another, who have empathy for one another. And there's also another part of it too, that I, I started to add on with our Purposeful Planning for Advisory and have shared with our teams, and that is the idea of using a social contract to develop group norms that could be used, that the kids are the decision-makers. So it's part of their personal responsibility of deciding what our norms are going to be and recognizing that it's part of our self-management and it all ties in and it's been pretty successful both in our classrooms and in the advisories where it's working, where we're utilizing it. So it's just one model.
Yes, so at Glenbrook, this is our second year of having advisory with the SEL focus. So the summer work was really adding to the sort of menu of activities to choose from, to teach it, to practice it, to apply it, discuss it, have students reflect on it. And in addition to that, we looked at a variety of different models that could be used. And I think, as you mentioned Pam, it really depends on the grade, first of all. What you do with a sixth grade advisory group is very different than what you would do with an eighth grade. They're so different. But also, it's really very depending on the group of students in front of you, just who they are and what their needs are, as well as I think the strengths and interests of individual teachers. So we really have a lot of different models going on that I think work really well. I think what they all have in common is we're trying to develop a personal relationship, the students and an adult, to become a member of a really small peer group. We're trying to really increase a sense of belonging and connectedness and trying to help the students grow and develop emotionally and morally, socially, and academically. So we try to leave it open and flexible for teachers and allow for creativity and then share what is working. So I just wanted to share with you one example, just so you could sort of see, just one, which is the approach that I am taking this year with my advisory. I really began the year looking for a way to focus my study of the competencies and really unify the time I had with my advisory students in a way that was hopefully engaging and allowed for physical movement while also learning about and practicing and reflecting on the competencies. So I decided that my advisory this year would be actually focused as an introduction to drama class. So my big guiding question is how is life like a stage? I'm an English teacher. And my sort of big idea with the kids is that the essential core drama skills are actually the same as the most important life skills. So they also happen to be our SEL skills. So just a couple of examples. For example, if you've ever done drama, a really important beginning skill is teamwork, building the, the ensemble, the cast working together. And that connects perfectly with the competency of relationship skills. You're building relationships, you're communicating, the social engagement. Another big drama skill is body language, facial expressions. And so that connects really well with social awareness, the idea of perspective-taking and developing empathy. You know, a third one skill we work on is improvising, which is a big drama skill. And that really connects perfectly with responsible decision-making, where you have to analyze a situation quickly, identify the problem, and then solve it with your group. So I'm trying to practice the skills through drama activities, but we're always discussing them, reflecting on how they're seen and using the skills, their importance, not just in the drama we're doing, but in school as well as outside of school. So that's just one approach and I think there's lots of different creative ways that teachers are approaching advisory. And we have a lot of time to share what is working best in our team meetings, with our colleagues, and in our PDs and our faculty meetings.
So I'm just gonna chime in real quick on that. So the, our first year of doing it last year is we have, you know, our website up and every grade has different activities for different competencies on our website. And we focused last year on doing two months of each one and just focusing in on those two months. And we send our communication to parents, like right now we're on self-awareness, this is what they'll be focusing on. Here's an article for parents, just to communicate that SEL at home. So we were, I know the three of you guys have had received those things. But, but this year what we did is we wanted to pull back a little more and give the freedom to cover the five competencies where you see fit. So something that's happening, happening in the real world, that, that would be a great lesson for empathy, that they can use it at that time and not have to wait for that to pop up. So now there's just more freedom to be utilizing them, more like fluid through the school days than having to choose. Because last year was our first year, so we kind of wanted to like really try to hone in on them and there's no rhyme or reason for the order, but this year we're giving a little bit of that and also tapping into our educators' strengths, which, you know, for Jocelyn is, is that drama background, so she's using that with what she's doing.
Yeah, I think giving teachers ownership and allowing for creativity with it actually gets a lot of buy-in too, because it gives them that ability to have some authenticity around what they're doing, which when we first started it, it was really structured to help them kind of understand it and now it's really letting them fly with it as we do with our kids, you know, how you practice it, what you, how you implement it. And I think Jocelyn's a perfect example of what, you know, what we hope, but I think we're seeing that a lot in different areas of the school too, which is great.
Do you want to add one question?
Yeah. So the sort of second area we did at Glenbrook for summer PD was looking at, let's branch beyond advisory and really start looking at, how do you incorporate social emotional learning into your day-to-day teaching, no matter what subject you're teaching? So if you could flip back to the other... So I just thought the best way would just be to share some examples of some of the things that we came up with, some of the things, for example, that I'm doing in my classroom as just an example. So, for example, self-management. I know this probably looks very obvious and it probably looks like it's just good teaching, but simple things like helping students fill out a student planner or agenda to keep track of their work, really explicitly teaching setting goals and breaking large assignments into smaller pieces with due dates. And I think, oh, that's good teaching, but I think maybe the different focus is that explicitly making that connection with kids, using the vocabulary, like what we're doing right now is self-management. And, you know, when, I know you talked about this in advisory, this, now we're doing it in an English class, this is self-management. It's not just something that is sort of separate. Relationship skills, really working with kids on how do you communicate, how do you listen well, what does it mean to cooperate and negotiate conflict? Students don't naturally necessarily know how to do that, some do, but really explicitly helping teach those skills. So one thing I know you, is too Pam, is I work with my kids, is on something called accountable talk. And it's sort of like it sounds, what does it mean to be part of, whether it's partner, group, large group, be held accountable for your talk? What does it look like? What does it sound like? What does it not look like? What does it not sound like? And opportunities to practice it through group work. We do something called Socratic Seminar, where they're practicing and applying the skills and actually being held accountable for them. For self-awareness, I've always done portfolios where students assess their strengths and weaknesses on the work they're doing for me, but I've broadened that out to starting them to do self-reflections this year on what do they see as their strengths and areas to work on in English when it comes to the five competencies. I just did my first one recently and I was really impressed. The students did, you know, this was one student's strength, she wrote a lot explaining what she thought her strength was and how she saw that with an English class and then her area to work on, what was the main one she wanted to focus on this year, and how did she see that as an area to work on within my class and some of the things that we do in class. I was really, they were very thoughtful and I hope to use these throughout the year to help this, help each student individually grow in the areas they felt they needed to grow in. Another way I'm having them self-reflect is if we're about to start a particular, say, project or assignment, I might ask them, you know, we're about to start this group project, which of these competencies do you think would be most useful to be successful in this project? Or, you know, maybe you're with a group and so relationship skills is the one we want to focus on as a class. We're about to start a really long-term project, let's, maybe you think, you know, self-management is the skill that you, we most need to work on as a class to be successful and have them reflect in those ways as well. So those are some of the things that we're looking at.
And at Williams, we're, we've been, well, we did, we, we tried for the first time the, the one book, one school, summer reading experience. And we chose it for a couple of different reasons and it relates to like that literature, the teacher's empathy. We thought that by having a shared experience, it would help to build a really strong sense of community. And with one book, one school, hearing it on all different levels and from different curricular areas, and the work that we've done around it in terms of the summer work that we did was really powerful to help to support the SEL as well. For example, I think our, our English strategies that we use and lessons that we have kind of tie in very nicely because we're talking about characters and what motivates a character. But talking about a, a character who we've all gotten to know really helps for the kids to be a little bit more open to discussion of like what, what the character did and how she showed responsible decision-making and how she was showing some self-awareness. So it takes it less off of them and puts it more onto this fictional character, which makes conversations like that fairly easy in an English classroom and prevalent in an English classroom as well. But we've also had great colleagues who have helped to support the cause as well. And we've been very fortunate that in our health curriculum, the teacher in the Health Department is working with the bullying and doing some role-playing with bullying, one of the characters is bullied in the, in the story, in the novel, and working with some of the, the role-playing. And again, using character, talking about the character, kind of again takes it off of them and makes it easier for them to be able to discuss and they all have that shared experience through the novel. Our technology teacher, the student, the main, I'm sorry, the main character who is a student suffers from dyslexia. And so through technology, our technology teacher has had the opportunity to talk about how binary code is kind of like the way that the brain works and that with dyslexia, when the, the code is messed up, how difficult it can be. So right away it's creating some of that empathy, but then they also go into some research as well with, and about famous people who suffer from dyslexia. So understanding how we kind of overcome that adversity in our lives and have that kind of stick-with-it-ness. So those are just two examples. And then we've been fortunate too, throughout the building, the, the novel is filled with great quotations and, that are, are very uplifting and very inspiring. And so throughout our building, we have quotations all around the building to inspire the students as they walk through the halls. But just having this shared experience has really been powerful for us at, at Williams. Yep, we need to go back. Okay, thank you.
So I think, just to sort of wrap our part up, there's still so much more to be done and that could be done. I think one of, some of it is a mindset that, just for example, if I teach English, there are definitely obviously very specific English skills and content that I need to teach, but sort of having the mindset that the social emotional learning competencies are also an equally important skill to be teaching and weaving into our daily teaching. So one thing that the English Department did this summer when we did English PD is we were working on curriculum maps. We actually, you know, for the first time included a row, you know, right under the English standards of what was, for each unit, we were working on what was the SEL focus for that unit. And we started to put that into our lesson plans and our unit plans. And we started to put that into our lesson plans and our unit plans, just as we would specific academic skills. And there's still so much more to learn. So for example, the Mass Teachers Association has just offered a professional development course called Weaving SEL Into Your Classroom to Make a Big Difference for Special Need Students. And I know there's at least a couple, maybe not more, Glenbrook teachers who are going to be going to that PD. It's the next two Saturdays actually, so.
And also to move this along and move it forward, part of what the folks at Williams are doing, we have Will Sullivan, our social studies teacher in grade eight, who has proposed and been approved for the High Quality Teacher Share. And in the High Quality Teacher Share, we're using Rick Wormaly's Ferris and Always Equal to really help to inform us as teachers, and I don't know what our total number is of teachers who are participating, but I know it's quite large, in the tens anyway, so.
It was fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen, okay, fifteen. But we've got so many people who are participating, and it's just such a great opportunity for us as teachers to help to really foster the environment in our classroom based on differentiation for practice, I'm sorry, for content, for process that kids go through, really helping us to get a good understanding of our students, what their needs are, especially with middle school students whose needs are so varied. And for us to really be able to foster the SEL climate in the classroom where we have mutual respect for each other, our demands are cognitively appropriate for our students, our assessments are fair, fair to really show mastery of a standard. So we're having great conversation about it. As teachers, we're doing a lot of reflection on our own process. So we're actually practicing a lot of the SEL skills through the High Quality Teacher Share that we're expecting from our kids, so. And we're moving forward with that too. It's been terrific.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rita.
So you guys will hear from our adjustment counselors.
Can I just chime in? So what I like about the way you've organized the presentation here is it sort of fits with the sort of RTI approach, which is what are the, what's the exposure of the teaching that all kids get through the advisory or through classroom practices? And then what is the more targeted supports that are provided? So I just want to...
A tiered approach.
Yeah, a tiered approach. So I just wanted to sort of point out that transition that we're about to experience. So it's what does everybody get, and then what do our specialists provide? So, thank you.
Okay, so I'll begin. Again, I'm Kira Dudak. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and then I serve as the adjustment counselor at Glenbrook. So I'm just going to briefly take this opportunity to go over my experience and my role in supporting and teaching the students at Glenbrook about social, emotional health. So basically, the role of the school adjustment counselor at Glenbrook is I provide all students at a variety of different levels, support, whether that be individually or in small groups. I do that through one-on-one counseling, and I also, this year, I facilitated a social skills group last year, and then this year I'm working with our speech and language pathologist to initiate a group around social pragmatics. I also facilitate a very well-attended lunch bunch, so much so that we've had to do two groups per grade, just for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade actually, so that everyone could be met, their needs could be met at the lunch bunch. I just think that this attributes to Glenbrook's culture of connection, and I really pride us on having this welcoming and safe environment where kids feel the need and the want to go to something like a lunch bunch. And you would think that as they get older, the buyout kind of decreases and people are kind of over it, but we've been doing really well with that, and our lunch bunch has been successful. I also serve as a member on the Social, Emotional Learning Committee. At Glenbrook, we really take a proactive approach to social, emotional learning and mental health. Our guidance department is made up of myself and Mitch Knowles, our school counselor, and we work together really to just, like I said, take this team-based approach to reach all different students across all different levels. Something that we do, myself and Mitch, is we facilitate classroom lessons. So they range on a variety of topics, but we do cover things like depression and suicide awareness, relational aggression, and online safety awareness. We also attend weekly team meetings, so we meet with our sixth-grade team, seventh-grade team, and eighth-grade team, just to get kind of a sense of what's going on with the kids there and if they have any students that may require us to look further into. We definitely talk to our teachers about that. Just to echo what Allie said and Mary Ann said last week, I also attend the Clinical Social Work Meetings monthly, where all the social workers in the district get together and go through case analysis and, like Allie said, just strengthen our knowledge around these topics and support one another in what we're doing at our individual schools. We also, at the high school, just like at the high school, have child study meetings where we identify students who might have some risks, whether that be academic or social, emotional, that we can address there. And then Mitch and I are in the process of rolling out a new guidance website where we'll have more resources for parents around child development and how to support at home what we're doing at school with this social, emotional learning. Other things that I've just done personally, last year I hosted a parents' night where we had community members come together and watch Screenagers. After that, we had a guided discussion, and we actually had panel members of professionals in the district, teachers at the school, and then we had a member from each grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth, talk about the effect of Screenagers and what screen time is having on their life right now. And then I also really like to go to our Makerspace Challenges that we have at Glenbrook. We hold them once a month. And basically, students get together in teams and attempt a wide variety of challenges. It depends on what our art teacher...
I think we have just as much fun.
Yes, we do, we really do. I look forward to the run-throughs. We get to do it before the students, and it's really fun to kind of see where we stack up working as a team with other professionals. I just think that going to those types of things, although it's not required in my job description, it makes me a lot more visible to students that sometimes don't know who I am, if I'm not necessarily on their grid or ed plan. So I think it just, like I said, creates this culture of connection and being approachable, and I think that that's really great. Mitch and I also, Mitch Knowles, the school counselor, also go into art and music classes throughout the entire year, but we just like to see kids shine in places that may be their strong suit, if they're not amazing at math, but they really love playing the guitar. It's nice to see them in their element, so we also like doing that. Just at Glenbrook, I know this work, social, emotional learning work is so important, and I know as a district, we just want to make sure that we're providing students with the resources necessary to be productive and well-adjusted members of society once they leave the Long Meadow Public School District. The reason why I think this is so important at middle school is because we often forget that these kids are going through a lot, especially during that middle school developmental age. And as we learn about social, emotional, and mental health, it's important to give them these tools necessary to create their own identity and figuring out who they want to be in this world, who they are currently, and what they still need to work on, which I think is awesome and critical, like I said, in this developmental period for them. I'm going to close in just saying that I am a product of this district, and I graduated in 2011. And I, when I was finishing up my master's, I knew that I always wanted to work in a school, but I really didn't understand until I got to Glenbrook how great I have at working in this district. We devote so much time to social, emotional learning, and it's really nice to work with professionals who see the importance in the work that I do as a social worker and echo that throughout their classrooms, before school, after school, sitting with students at lunch. I just think it's a great place to be, and it just goes to show that we're creating this safe environment where students feel supported, and then they have the tools necessary to be successful across all disciplines, so. That's me, that's me.
And I'm Megan Tucker. I'm the licensed independent clinical social worker and the school adjustment counselor at Williams Middle School. So just a little bit of background, before I started working in Long Meadow, I was at Ludlow Public Schools for a few years, for four years, and then before that, more intensive clinical settings. So I worked in, I was a clinical coordinator in a therapeutic day school, which is a MAPS school, and I also worked outpatient at ServiceNet, doing some outpatient counseling. And prior to that, I worked as a clinician at Providence Behavioral Health Hospital, so much more intensive settings. So here I am in Long Meadow, and I'm delighted to be part of the Long Meadow community and work in a district with such a great reputation. And I'm really glad, as everyone is saying here, that Long Meadow is really focusing on SEL. It's so important, and it's something, SEL and mental health is something I'm very passionate about, obviously, as a social worker. So in my role as a social worker at Williams, I provide counseling individually and in groups, as Kira was saying, students that have it in their IEP plans, 504 plans, but also many students that are general education students that have varying social and emotional needs. And I work with students to problem-solve challenging social situations, at times mediate between students. There's a lot of conflicts in middle schools, so trying to help kids navigate those social situations. I work in close collaboration with the guidance counselor, Mary Morrissey, St. Mordecai, and Mitch Knowles over at Glenbrook, and we go into the classrooms and provide lessons as well. This year, we're doing topics on brain development in the sixth grade, mindfulness practices in the seventh grade, and stress management in the eighth grade. And I'm looking forward to collaborate, we were saying before this, we're looking forward to collaborating more and trying to align the lessons that we're doing in the classrooms between both of the middle schools, so we're looking forward to that as well. A really important part of my job is also collaborating with the skilled group of educators that we have at Williams, participating in those team meetings, maintaining ongoing communication, whether it's face-to-face or emails, and supporting students' social, emotional needs. So I like to have an open-door policy and have teachers come to me with any concerns that come up at any time. I too am collaborating with the speech and language pathologist this year in doing a social pragmatics group for a small group of kids that specifically have it written in their individualized education plans. And I wanted to mention that the summer reading book, Fish in a Tree, has been a wonderful tool this year in individual counseling with kids, in like more casual conversations with kids in the cafeteria, as well as in small groups. It's a great tool to open up conversations, you know, just about what's going on, ways that they can relate to the characters in the book. It's a great learning tool. I've been recommending it to my fellow social work friends and educators as well. So steps this year that we're taking at Williams to increase school-wide SEL that aligns with those five core competencies. Of course, we provide the explicit SEL instruction in the advisories and in the groups that I facilitate and co-facilitate. One of the things that we've been working on recently, Neil and I have been talking about starting grade-level community meetings. So we'll be having community meetings at each grade level where we'll really be highlighting the core competencies, those five core competencies. So sort of next Friday, we're starting our first series of community meetings. We'll be rolling out the five core competencies, and then we'll be following up, highlighting each individual competency throughout the course of the school year, and then of course, bridging that and carrying it over into advisories and the classrooms as well. So it's another venue for explicit instruction and also community building. One of the things that our art teacher, Mr. O'Gilvie, has done, he's excellent and has a passion for SEL as well, he's worked with the students to create these large banners, sort of highlighting each competency. So we have one for self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, social awareness, and responsible decision-making. And we're going to be showing these banners at the community meetings. We're really excited about it. We want it to be fun for the kids so that they feel engaged and really buy into the core competencies. And we've also been talking about ways to involve families and keep parents informed of what we're doing through school messengers, through the newsletters. Mary Morrissey and I also keep our guidance website updated, and so we're going to be highlighting those things on the guidance website as well. I also participate and will be working on the SEL committee this year. I'm really excited about that. We're getting our first meeting going on next Tuesday, and I've already had teachers emailing and contacting me, like if they want to get on board. They're really excited about the SEL committee, which is great. And so we'll just constantly revisit ways to incorporate SEL, our practices being effective, what are ways that we can continue to integrate it throughout the school community. Obviously, we also talk about SEL through the RTI process. It's funny that you said that. It's one of the things that we really focused on trying to incorporate in our RTI meetings this year, so not just focusing on the core academics, but ways that we can further meet students' social and emotional needs as they need sort of higher levels of support, the next tier of support. One other thing that I would really like to do this year, I'm going to get started, is a form of a gay-straight alliance at the middle school level. It's not something that they've had at the middle school level. This year, they offer one at the high school level, but it's really based on student interest.
Bless you.
I've had students coming to me and seeking this, they're requesting this, and so I feel like I have a responsibility to meet these students' needs. So it's something I want to get going after school time and provide a safe space for LGBTQ students to, and allies, to feel supported. So I'm just, I'm really excited for this year. We have a lot of great things going on and for the rest of the future, and really trying to help create a positive school-wide learning environment for everyone. So, thank you.
I think it's important, I'm sorry, just wanted to quickly add, I think it's important for us to remember that it, the skills that we're explicitly providing opportunities to teach and learn and practice go beyond just the classroom, right? We want to remind ourselves and our students and families that we are working all together to support community members. You know, these are students that are going to leave the school one day and have to be, they'll be out in the world in careers or navigating their own relationships with people outside of the school. So providing students an opportunity to practice these skills in a safer environment and, you know, practice being able to work in their environment, outside of the school environment, on problem-solving skills. Educators and community agencies serve students with different motivations and motivators for engaging and learning and behaving positively and performing academically. And so social, emotional learning provides a foundation for safe and positive learning and enhances students' ability to succeed beyond the school, in the careers and life. And so that really is the work that we are looking at to beyond the classroom and what we can provide.
Okay, so this is the evidence page. I'm going to take the signs of success, and Neil's going to take the basis for growth. So the first bullet point is that eighty-five percent of eighth-grade students feel they fit in. This is according to the survey that the students take in eighth grade that took last year right after the science end cast. And then increased number of participation in clubs, debate, newspaper, creative writing, et cetera. We had a specific number of clubs four years ago, and I would have to say it's amazing how much the clubs have grown based on student interest, where they come, they're advocating for something they are interested in. We try to see if somebody is willing to volunteer for, to supervise that club, and then it's amazing that you fast-forward after two meetings and there's an amazing amount of kids participating in all these different clubs. So Debate Team was one of the newest ones. I know they're trying to create another one, some sort of TED Talk. See how that goes. But I just, I think if you walked around our building on any given day after school, you'd be amazed at the participation in the clubs that we have. It's like the noise, and it's just like, it's filled with life after school hours, and that's, I think that's also a show that the kids feel comfortable being in the building. The SEL committee work with, which I know Megan and Kira touched on, is that we just started an official committee this year to really hone in and have a group that focuses on it. Same thing, we had a bunch of teachers, we just had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago, but we, it went really well. We had a focus, we discussed it, we talked about what our future agenda item was going to be, you know, which was service learning for us. It's a little bit different from community service. It's a little more where the kids are really buying in and creating stuff like PSAs or, as I said, creating like a Valentine's dance for the Jewish Community Center. Like, there's different ways to give back, and we're taking a look at that as well. And it kind of ties into utilizing faculty meetings, or more like we're making faculty meetings, like Neil said, like mini PDs now to utilize for SEL. So we just, last week, last Monday, Williams and Glenbrook, we both did work in this book Yard Sticks, where basically it's just, it talks about where kids are, their adolescent development ages four through fourteen. So if you have a child that's in this range, it's really interesting to read, like how old your child is and everything that's happening to them developmentally. It's kind of crazy. And so it talks about everything, cross-content, where they are independence-wise, physically, where they are in each, you know, how they're moving towards independence, and then, you know, this is, everyone got like a cheat sheet depending on what grade they teach, and it does the like, the three-year range of where they're at. Kind of just to give you a little snapshot into the kids that you're working with, because I think what we kicked off with was like, you know, what are, what are the things that your kids have strengths in, what are their weaknesses, what can like get you frustrated sometimes in the classroom, you know? And it's, and then you look back and you're like, oh, well, these are all things that they deal with at that age. So it's like, it just reminds them like what they're going through, and I think sometimes everyone needs a little reminder. So we did that on Monday.
I think what else was interesting is that, within a grade of different grades...
a different age group, so it ranges. Like, you could have a younger student and they might be at a totally different place than their peer that's in the classroom next to them. So I think it also ties in that whole development of actually where each student is versus an entire grade, which I think was interesting when we had conversations around that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be props to Nicole for bringing Yard Sticks out, fourth edition. I used to use it quite a bit at the elementary level.
He's like, is that the new one?
I honestly, I had forgotten about it. But what was awesome about the staff meeting the other day, and I would just say chime in or not, but it was, it was a great reminder of what the students are going through at this point in time in their educational careers. And then part two, that led to a great conversation about how we can better support the parents, guardians at home. And we thought, well, the awesome bulleted list of what are developmentally appropriate in the book would be really nice.
It says that too, at home. There's a whole section at home.
Is that something you're planning on distributing or you need some more?
Right now, on the counseling website, Kira did take each one of these. Sorry. Each one of these is on there for them to view, but I mean, we would be more than willing to. We were always talking about doing something more, but it's pretty amazing. It has like a little, like a drawing for each year to show like how they progress even in art. So it literally takes every piece, and it's 13 pages for each age. And it's, it's just pretty awesome. I think the teachers loved doing it. I think at the end, we asked them, like, if you could add a couple of things about that age group, you know, what would you say? Or what did you find the most interesting? And just have them talking about it. And you heard a lot of them talking about like, oh, my kid is this age. And it's kind of, you know, so it was cool to really learn. That's really part of the SEL work too, is learning where they are developmentally because we're not there anymore, you know? And it's like trying to zone back into where they're at in middle school. So, so we're really working towards making our faculty meetings more mini PDs so that we have more opportunities monthly for us to have. Because our staff doesn't get to see each other unless they have team, unless there's like a bigger PD day. So once a month, they're all in these little groups where we're doing this work, which is just pretty cool. And a look ahead is that, you know, our work from our social-emotional learning committee ties eventually like right into what we're doing in faculty. So our next meeting is focused on service learning. And then our next faculty meeting will be about service learning, where they start to talk about it. And then they're going to start talking about what their advisory is and focusing on what they want to do as an advisory. And then our health teacher teaches a PGC course, Mental Health in Teens, and she's going to do a mini version of that with our, with our staff, that following faculty. So it's really nice to use those meetings in this way. I feel like they're just effective and beneficial for the staff to have that time together. And then the last bullet, transitioning from additive to transformational change, infusing SEL practices throughout the school day, before and after. So that's all the stuff that we talked about today, especially when Pam and Jocelyn talked about today and how we have advisory, but all the stuff that we're doing, infusing it to the classroom and having students reflect on them, their work as a way of, you know, measurement and stuff like that. So I think those are the areas that we're, you know, feeling like pretty good and going in the right direction.
So basis for growth. We realize that this is a work in progress. We are trying to figure out what is the best way to really measure the effectiveness of what it is we're doing. Here is, or are, a couple of examples of what we're, we're looking at currently. So this past year, eighth grade was given or we administered the, help me out, the YRBS survey, did I say?
Yeah, Youth Risk Behavior Survey, yeah.
There you go. So for the first time, we administered that. One of the pieces of data that came out of that was 26% of the eighth grade students have been anxious over the last past, or two weeks in the past year. Watched you that. The point to bringing that up is we really believe that was the impetus or one of the reasons we went ahead and supported the hiring of two full-time adjustment counselors to better support both schools. Also, we look closely at, I said, we say the empirical or the observed data in conjunction with the survey data from, you know, the admin team, teachers and students. I think in my brief time at the middle level, what we do really well is the teachers and admin teams communicate really well with respect to what the students need. So we can't dismiss the observable empirical data that comes from those team meetings that we alluded to earlier. So it's just another piece of data that we do look at and take seriously. And we were, we were just really digging a little deeper into that by recognizing and not dismissing the role social media has on our students and how a lot of overseeing is generated in that platform and also how we are addressing the social interactions with our students, the peer conflict, bullying and cyberbullying. So those are a couple, I guess, pieces of evidence that just build the case to, you know, why we need to grow. Lastly, I would just recognize that Castle is in the process of, or has, would you say, Nicole, has developed a wonderful list of indicators that are similar to the teacher evaluation or the principal evaluation tool that really highlight those concrete examples of what we should be seeing in different environments in the building. And we're really looking closely at those with the hopes that we can transform those into surveys or exemplars that we can use to measure student growth surveys and whatnot. I don't know if you agree with that.
Yeah, so the Castle's saying it's coming out till late 2018 with, with an assessment tool. I think obviously we all want to be able to assess it and measure it more deeply. We, you know, we spoke about the little, the things that we do by surveying, the reflections we have the kids do on themselves, which we talked about. You know, we have teachers that took some of the surveys and broke it down to, depending again, what age. If it's sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, it's very different how they view themselves sometimes. So, you know, giving, picking a competency and focusing in on them and looking at this and then giving it to them in three months from now and seeing where they're at. And then what we did back in August with the teachers during that PD is we had them assess themselves following SEL stuff when it came to instructional interactions and teaching practices. And what we did is we said, use this now to go ahead and tell us what your strengths are and what your areas of growth are. And then taking your areas of growth, create a goal for this year for yourselves. So I think for our teachers to be part of that SEL work too, it's important for them to really be part of that and to, and to reflect on themselves if we're asking kids to reflect on theirselves. So I think that's important too. But, you know, the surveying, the creating stuff, the use of the indicators that you guys have in your packet that we had received when we were in Nashville, that, there's stuff that we're just starting to be able to use to kind of hold the kids, you know, and have conversations with them and have them reflect and stuff like that, so.
And I think many teachers actually chose to do a teach point goal this year.
Yeah, yes, yep.
Around professional goals around SEL.
What is, that's interesting, Jocelyn. Not to put you on the spot, or maybe it's a better question for Nicole and Neil, but can you give us some, some feedback on that? Like, what did that look like if teachers are forming goals on SEL?
Some type of a specific one.
Yeah.
Might be something we can bring back.
Yeah. I was going to use the high-quality teacher share as the example. I think everyone's looking critically at the manner in which they're delivering content. I don't know. I do think, just in closing, on that slide, in terms of evidence, it's definitely an area that we're, I don't want to say struggling in, but it's an area that we recognize nationally is an area that.
Still evolving. We're still evolving.
Yeah.
Best addressed.
Yeah, it's a work in progress. So we continue to look at the best ways to measure the growth of our students under that umbrella of social-emotional learning.
Was there one more slide or I think you?
Uh, one more, just future directions. We already talked a lot about these, but classroom, you know, that whole idea of infusing the social-emotional content into the classroom. We need to be living and breathing it regardless of where we are in the building. It can't happen just in, say, advisory. It's got to be overflowing into all aspects of our school, school day.
Yeah, and then the second part to that we just talked about, which was the Castle, the assessment tool. And then the school part is just school-wide practices, which we touched on anyways. But that one-on-one conferencing with advisees, so that's something else that I know a lot of our staff had talked about is making their own personal goals as well, is just finding the time during their team time and maybe finding out what kids have explore blocks and being able to kind of have time to pull them and have one-on-one conferences with those kids during their advisory just to continue that connection with them and check in with them like an individual check-in. We do that, or lunch.
Someone like to come up and have lunch.
Or lunch, yeah. So, and we do have, I mean, we have one, two, maybe three at this point that eat lunch with the kids every day, every day. So they're down there, they're having time with their kids. It's not just, you know, they do conferring in the classroom academically, but it's nice for them to have that check-in with them to focus on social-emotional learning. We have cross-grade mentoring. I think we had some of the.
Yeah, so I think what's, what's amazing now is that because of all the high school work, we do have peer leaders from the high school who've really come down and mentored the middle school level, which just goes to show sometimes kids aren't always wanting to hear from adults, but that mentorship can have such an impact on kids. And I know they've come down to our health classes. They've done a couple of programming stuff with us, different clubs that they're now becoming leaders in. You know, I know we've kind of mirrored that a little bit at Glenbrook with our own peer leaders. They're going to spend most of their class working with our sixth graders on study skills. So, I mean, I think there's so much to be said and having also been a product of La Meadow, that, you know, relationships, because we're a small town and because we have smaller schools, you know, it allows for this. But being really intended to make those connections is kind of, I think, where we're all focusing. Because it happened when I was in school, I had great relationships with teachers, but how do we get those one-on-one moments so that every kid feels connected or that every kid has somebody? On top of that, how do we get our older students to really model for our younger students the, the things that we're teaching across the board? And I think that's, those are the connected pieces that go throughout the entire community, not just Glenbrook or Williams, that we're really trying to get kind of overall vertical effect of this, of this work. So I love that we have mentoring from, from our high school students.
The home piece, communication with families. We talked a little bit about that, about sharing out on what we're focusing on in school, so you can have that conversation again at home. You know, we, I don't have to bore you with all these books, but there's, you know, this one is SEL in the Home. So there's like little things we pull from it, are able to work with them. You know, there's a whole Castle website that when you click on certain links, where it's like the toolkit for parents, it brings you to certain stuff that you can focus on. And I know, I know some of the feedback we got is that a couple of years ago is that it's really hard for parents to know what their kids, like what they're focused on. But if they have something to hold on to, like we spoke about empathy in class today, or they're doing that in advisory, then it gives you that, like, that opens a door for you at home to have a conversation with your kid. If they don't typically come home and share everything with you, and I know as they get older, less of that, maybe they do. So this gives you like just a little window into what they're doing. So it talks about that for the home part. And then Neil, the community?
It's really, it's a wraparound services. You know, involving all stakeholders in, in this experience of supporting our, our learners. So looking at different ways in which we can do that. I love the idea of the service learning projects. How can we pay it forward and pay it back to the community? I think that's a really good question. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
I would love to open it up to questions or even comments on the presentation. Reggie, lead us off.
On the high school, we have like a little, like squad that talks to the school committee about like issues, like concerns. So like, I was wondering, what do you all like think about saying like a middle school representative with us to like voice the concerns of middle school students?
I think that's great. I think you guys talked about doing that last year. They couldn't quite pull it together, but I think it's great. I think it's great. I think we try to get, communicate with student council kids, I think, and then. Yeah. I mean, I'm on board, sorry. Everyone else agreed. I think it's great, yeah.
So you can like contact me, Mr. Darkley, about that.
Okay.
And you're Mr. Mazza? I'm sorry.
Let him better answer.
Thanks, Reggie. Karen?
So I just want to thank you all. That was a really great presentation. I appreciate all the work and the time that you put into it. It was really helpful to hear specific examples of what's going on in the classrooms and with the social workers. And I really appreciate that. I loved hearing that you're making it more intentional in the daily practices and purposeful. That means so much, I think, really. I think that's really what it's all about and that's how we get it to where we need it to be. I just had a couple of questions. When you talked about what you were doing within the schools, do you ever have time to get together and talk about best practices between the schools with each other and kind of share? You know, it sounded like there was a lot of different stuff going on in the schools and I was just curious to hear if you do.
So we just started the, so we were having department meetings where they were just the departments within our buildings and we couldn't quite figure out what travel, you know, the timing of it. But we just started now with the cross-buildings. Is department meeting days, which is once a month too, would be cross-town? So we would take turns going to Williams, take turns going to Glenbrook, where they have that time to meet, not just only in the big PD days, but they'll have times once a month to meet as well. For 45, about 45 minutes by the time they travel to the other building, but at least it's once a month where they can talk about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because it sounds, you know, it sounds like there's some great things going on and to, you know, get that information to each other would be fantastic. And then my last question was, when you talk about measuring, I wonder, and you talked about this home and communication with families, do you ever talk about a possible survey of parents similar to the youth behavior risk survey, but from the parent's perspective to see, you know, what, how they are seeing?
They're seeing it at home.
Yeah, how they see this working at home, you know, making that connection. Because I think sometimes, especially with the middle school students, it's a very different, because a parent has a very different perspective of what their child is, so just.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, how it's carrying over.
Let me see if they talk about that.
I think it's something, I think it's a great idea. We've done, some of the elementary schools through the school councils have done some school climate surveys for, for parents. And we did a staff and community survey, you know, about a year and a half ago or so. But I think, you know, trying to get that parent perspective as well is, would be key.
Ryan?
On the same topic, so about parents, knowing what you all are doing. I know as a parent of a seventh grader at Williams, I get many emails about everything that's going on at the school. Let's say hypothetically, I don't click on the slides and see what you guys were doing in your latest faculty meeting. How, how do we know that parents are looking and in our own talking with our kids can support the stuff that you all are doing during the school day? I struggle as a principal getting the parents of my students to do the same thing. I have no clue if they're listening, reading what we sent home or paying. No, that's not how you're supposed to talk. You know, that conversation from the kid, how do we know? And I'm asking a question for which I don't have an answer.
If they don't thoroughly read like what we send them.
Yeah. So part of the survey idea, like how are you seeing your kid? Well, here's another thing. Do they actually know anything about what you all presented tonight?
I would say, yeah, I would say, there's a couple of kids that, especially we just had school council before we left, and I would say that the kids spoke really eloquently about social-emotional learning at our school council. That made me feel like, wow, maybe they should come tonight and present. I mean, I think that they, they, you know, they may not know every piece of what we were doing tonight, but I think after having last year, what we were doing tonight, but I think after having last year, I mean, I think the sixth graders--
No, I believe the kids do. I don't think their parents know.
Oh, their parents.
Sorry. I'm sorry. So as administrators and teachers and counselors, we are outside in the buildings. Um, when parents come in to drop off lunches or drop off their kids, we are always available to talk and communicate and strike up a conversation. In Carline, for example, we've had conversations with parents right at the window as they're driving, like, hey, we have a meeting. Um, so we're making ourselves available. And in, at both schools, parents walk right in, have no problem calling and, um, striking up a conversation, or, or coming in to drop off something and then furthering the conversation, asking, looking, um, we have kind of an open-door policy, I have to say. So there are opportunities, certainly opportunities that we can, you know, expand upon, but there are other opportunities, I think, beyond the slides.
I mean, to actually, I think, like, reach out to all the parents. I mean, obviously Messenger is our best way to do that, like, in general, but I, I don't know-- I mean, there's little things, even the advisors send out a mon-- send out a monthly email to let people know what they're doing in advisory, but again, if they're not really thoroughly reading the Messenger, but I mean, I guess, survey would be a good idea, um, if they take the survey, if they're not reading it. But I think it's true. I think, when they're coming through the building and seeing what we're doing, we talked about having more opportunities at night for parents to come in, to see the things that we're doing. Um, we had, uh, the invention convention last year, when all the parents came in to look at that interdisciplinary project, to all the eighth graders, like, I think we're really trying to get more things happening in the building so that more parents are able to come in.
PAC meetings and--
Yeah, I think we're trying to streamline it as much as possible, make the information as Twitter-esque as possible, right?
We do have Twitter.
It's not--
Tweet behind it.
Hashtag. Um, yeah, I, I, I think it's a really good point. I know last year's school council, um, did a survey, really looking for what is the ideal medium to receive information. Um, I think the answer is we have to hit all different, um, social media platforms. We did for the PAC meeting, the Facebook Live, trying to present information in a different manner. I had a parent email and said it was awesome to be able to put it on her phone on the drive into work, so she could listen.
Not watch, just listen.
Just listen, yeah. But the, the point being, it's a, it's a challenge.
That's, I, I wanna, I wanna underscore that, um, Beth was there, just a school committee rep, so at the Williams PAC meeting, yeah, they, they did the live stream, and, uh, Neil's, uh, was recorded doing an SEL presentation, and--
SNL, did you say?
Not, uh, borderline.
We did not.
Yeah. Uh, but that, that, right, I mean, that, that's something I think we're learning every day, trying to figure out every day more ways to, to reach parents and, and help them understand what we're up to, and, and also collect feedback from parents so that our work is targeted to their concerns as well, so.
I think, I think what we're all saying is we're trying to create that energy and buzz at the grassroots student level where, uh, students go home and that's what they're talking about, and I, I think there's something to be said about that as well.
Students are excited. They want to lead this whole, you know, experience. We have students that have reached out to Meg and I'm sure to Kira as well, that want to know how they can lead a discussion, how they can help educate their peers on certain, certain topics, you know, how to guide the, the learning of empathy and acceptance of all people. Uh, they're excited.
Yeah, I talked a little bit about the community meetings that we're getting started, and we have some student leaders from each grade level that are gonna be helping us as well, having input and helping us lead those, those discussions, so it'll be a great way, hopefully, so then, you know, kids will be going home, talking about the, the community meetings and the things that we're doing.
I think we do that a little bit at Glennbrook. No one mentioned it yet, but we do these things called Bulldog Awards, and so it, if you are seen doing something kind, or thoughtful, or anything that we have streamlined through the social-emotional learning, um, you get a ticket, and you might get picked at the end of the week and get a water bottle or a gift card. Um, but I had a girl come into my office last week, I think, and she was so excited to go home and show her parents that she got a Bulldog Award. She found $20 on the ground, returned it. She said it took a lot of me to give it back. She said, "I don't have a job." And I was like, "I understand, that's, it was big of you to do that," right? That was such a kind thing to do, thoughtful to think of somebody else losing their money, and she said, "And it came full circle. Karma came back." And the, um, the receptors gave it back to me because no one picked it up when it was over, but she was so excited to see her parents, um, and how they would receive this information. So I think this feel-good mentality that social-emotional learning brings will hopefully have these students take what they're learning and bring it back home. They, she recognized that she did something really great and very kind and thoughtful, and she wanted to go home and share that with her parents, and I think that that's great.
And Charlie Applestein was someone that came a couple of years ago and taught us about having those, like, how, yeah, we get emails we can send home to parents, but, you know, when they're pick-- when they're picking up their mail and there's like a ton of bills in it, it's fun to have something that talks really nice about your child. So we started implementing postcards where teachers were giving out postcards, um, for any particular reason, but really focused around the SEL. So when a kid got it at home, like, I, there was one that I sent out one time, and a parent wrote back so excited that her child receives something like that. So just little things go a long way.
Bromlett?
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for their time in putting this presentation together, coming this evening. Uh, it's extremely helpful, uh, very informative. We know there's a lot of great things going on, but it's nice to be able to see up close and hear from you guys. Also, I'm really impressed with the collaboration, the team-based approach between both schools. It just seems like there's collaboration amongst the schools, the administrators, um, and now the teachers, you guys setting up those meetings, it seems like that's gonna be super helpful. Um, you know, I'm sure the kids will see that, and be like, "Oh, wow, that's great," you know, teachers are, we're getting teachers from Williams and Glennbrook and seeing how they can, um, you know, make things better for the school. Um, and I do think the communication with the parents, I mean, I find the emails super helpful, um, just to be able to--
I thought you were gonna say too frequent.
Yeah. Really, they're, they're very helpful. And if I don't have time, I'll, I'll go back to it, but just to know what, um, you know, my son might be, you know, learning at school, and, you know, see what conversations may come up and things like that, um, I do find them helpful. I don't know another avenue, um, that Brian was asking about. It's a good question.
Yeah, it is a good question. I think you just expect that, when everybody's reading the emails you send, but you're right, I mean, some people--
I just opened three while we were here, though. It's a lot from you. What do you want? Like, three at that?
There's a lot this week, this last week has been a lot.
I do actually take that back. Never mind.
Armand?
Yeah, I wanna thank everybody, just like everyone else said, a great presentation. Um, I think the most powerful thing for me was the sharing of the personal experiences. Um, I thought that brought the abstract into the present, and, and I find that really helpful for, for me. Uh, the communication, I can't say enough, it's really good, except for like the 20-class dojo emails I gave.
Our teachers are all focused on--
I love it.
I do, too, except for the 20 thing. Well, I, I, at least as a Glennbrook parent, I can say, I'm sure this happens at, at, at Williams as well, those emails are really helpful. I mean, keeping us on track of what's available, what the kids are seeing, the dates, just seeing the dates in advance is really good stuff, so. Um, and then, you know, just the continuity of the leadership that we have right here is just incredible. Uh, just, you know, thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else that they wanna share? 'Cause I'm just gonna give my little wrap-up at the end, because I take a lot of notes while you're talking. And I wanna, as chair, I really don't wanna talk a lot. I wanna facilitate, make sure we have the great conversation, but, um, I do wanna thank you, because, um, in my role as chair, it's, it's important that I recognize that the committee, our, our job here really is to set goals, and then the follow-through is monitor the progress. And I have to think a lot about, well, how, what are we learning from your presentations? Like, what, what does this offer us, and, and how, um, important it is for us to get this information? So with a little guidance and help, I have like a little framework, um, from MASC that I'm kind of using now, um, in terms of presentations, and I kind of check all the boxes. Um, you define the issue, um, your overview and background, phenomenal. Like, if I were to give a grade, A+, you assembled a team that was just, um, the tiered approach, you each had something to say, um, great job of bringing SEL overview to us through a teacher perspective, um, an adjustment counselor perspective, um, job well done on that. The other thing I, I wanna highlight are the recommendations. Things that I heard were, um, alignment with both schools, which I love hearing. Um, the PD sharing and best practices, where do we go from here? Um, it was great to hear that you guys value feedback, um, as professionals within your community. If teachers are doing something really well, you want that feedback, you wanna learn from it, you wanna grow, you wanna tweak. Um, that was really nice to hear. Um, the community meetings, I thought were great, community engagement and building parent partnerships, all really good things. The G straight alliance, loved hearing about that. Um, so that you, in your presentation, you gave us recommendations of things that you, you know, are either doing or, or set out to do, which I think is great. And then, um, in terms of the school committee, I always have to think about, you know, your statement of impact, and I always have to think about the question about, you know, how does all your work really affect or improve student achievements or behaviors? Like, how, at the end of the day, how has what you've done changed your climate or your culture at your school? So we talk a little bit about, you know, you're measuring that and how, how that, um, is happening. So that's important for us to know, because we, we, as school committee members, need to start to figure out, how can we support that in the budget or policy? What ways can we, um, support what you're doing? So I would always encourage you to be giving us feedback on that, if you have any very specific ways. Um, things I wanted to highlight was the alignment of the Castle framework. Um, I love, Pam, that you said each teacher took, in the summer work, took a portion of the framework and really owned it. I don't know if it was, sorry.
I knew it came--
I'm so sorry. We'll give credit, we're crediting you, John. But that you, you took that and you owned it, and, and that each teacher took a, a part of it, um, things that Karen had also said, that you're making it more intentional, um, it's critical work, you're recognizing that, you're creating the culture of, of connectiveness, all really great things. So, um, continue to share the best practices and, and find ways to keep engaging the community, because I think if the kids are excited about it, the parents are gonna ask questions, um, it just sounds like, you know, you're doing a nice job, but also recognizing the continuum of the work, and how much, um, I mean, for two years, though, to say that, you know, last year you really dug into the, the framework, and this way, this year you're trying to find a creative way to, to make it more systemic, um, I think as a committee, we really appreciate that. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Everybody wants to send a Red Sox score? One?
I think Tom Friendly knows they want to. He's got it on his computer.
Are you freezing? Are you freezing? I'm freezing. She's really cold. Ricky's toes are frozen over there.
We had a, we had a hot cross-country pizza sauce.
Oh, side guys. Just gonna give a moment for our group to come back to the table and get back to their places before we move on the agenda. So we are gonna move on to our administrative report, and we can lead off with the superintendent report.
Sure. A few items, there's a written report in your packet. Um, want a couple of plugs. One is for, um, Public Safety Day, October 13th, 10:00 AM. It's on a Saturday. Uh, our public safety partners, uh, Long Island Police, Long Island Fire, are putting on a Public Safety Day, and a good opportunity for kids to meet some firefighters, police officers, see some police cars, fire engines, and, uh, see some demonstrations. So that's, uh, on the 13th at 10:00 AM on Saturday. Mr. Dunkerly was here earlier. He's been, uh, one of the, um, strong advocates, um, along with Lori Snyder, social studies teacher at the high school, and the whole high school administration of a, our annual Japanese cultural exchange. So we are entering the 13th year of this exchange with Takikawa Nishi High School in Japan, uh, and so we'll once again be hosting some students. Uh, and there's a teacher of English, uh, Mr. Kamura, that will, uh, join us as well. Uh, chatting with Mr. Dunkerly, if the committee is interested, uh, Mr. Kamura could join, could come to your October 23rd meeting. Uh, just a, a brief hello and welcome to him, if that's something you'd like us to arrange, let us know. Uh, and then, um, there is a, on Friday, November 2nd, in the LHS auditorium, uh, there is, uh, the annual cultural celebration, and so it would be great if we could have, um, representation there from administration. I will, uh, make every effort to attend, and, uh, we'd love to have you if your schedules allow. That's Friday, November 2nd, uh, for the Japanese cultural celebration. Uh, just let Diana or I know, and we can confirm. I know that, um, when our students and our delegation goes over to Takikawa, they, they, uh, they do a nice job of, of welcoming our, our students and our staff, so, um, hopefully we can, uh, reciprocate there. Mass School Building Authority, uh, so Mr. Mazza, so this is something that, let me back up, this is something we had chatted about at Finance Sub when there was some conversation on our capital, the capital needs of our building. And so one of the things we think we ought to at least explore is the, uh, Mass School Building Authority's accelerated repair program. And so with this accelerated repair, repair program, districts can, um, look to partner with the NSBA on, uh, accelerated rapid repairs, windows, boilers, roofs, and doors. And so we had, uh, an initial conversation with MSBA staff, and we can bring that back to, uh, Finance Sub as part of the capital planning process. Um, we'll pull that information together, but, uh, there might be, there's some high thresholds that they have for, uh, the age of systems that they will consider the repair or replacement of, but, uh, that there might be some opportunities for us through that accelerated repair program. Another thing for your calendars, November 3rd, Leaf Gala, Twin Hills Country Club, 6:30 PM. Um, we love the partnership that we have with the, uh, with Leaf, the Educational Foundation, provide us with, with annually tens of thousands of dollars in grants to, to fuel a lot of creative projects at the classroom level. So that's the Leaf Gala, November 3rd, 6:30, Twin Hills. Uh, first meeting of the Start Time Task Force, High School Start Time Task Force, is tomorrow at 4:00 PM. Chatted with, um, with Beth, and she had the idea of inviting our district physician, Dr. Sally Ginsberg, to join the task force. I haven't connected with her, um, I, I have left her message, but we're hoping to, uh, add her expertise to that task force, if that's okay with the committee. And then finally, um, I wanted to note that, um, I've been chatting with, uh, Fire Chief John Dearborn recently about his role on the Western Mass Homeland Security Advisory Council. Uh, it's a really well-organized, well-resourced group, and, um, he's, uh, sort of invited me to, perhaps, serve as a representative of the education sector. Still has to be approved by that organization, but even if that doesn't shake out, um, it's a, it's a council that, uh, whose expertise I think we should, uh, continue to tap into, so. That's, uh, that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions you might have, but the written report is in your packet.
Does anyone have any follow-up? Armand?
Just one question, on the accelerated repair program--
Yeah.
--we used to tie that to not being able to qualify for, for new school funding if you did accept the repair, so is that, is that like part of the discussion stuff?
I don't think that's the case. I, I haven't, I haven't heard them connect those dots, that, that's sort of the, uh, the, the runner-up trophy--
Okay.
--if you're not invited into the core program. I, in fact, I think it, it's really a separate program entirely, and it's, they want to work with districts that are demonstrating that, in fact, you are taking care of your, your buildings. And so they, they have a, some strict requirements that you provide the MSBA with some very specific information that proves that you're making investments regularly in your buildings, and that you have regular preventative maintenance plans, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, I, I didn't, I haven't heard anything that suggested to me that it was sort of the, you know, the consolation prize, I guess, you know, but, so I'm hoping that turns out to be the case. Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, and we can move on to, um, Sue, the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Report.
Sure. Um, another template for you to look at. I tried to organize it by our goals. I'm gonna try to stick with this one for a few weeks and see what you, I'll be welcome to your feedback on this. Um, so, uh, you just heard a whole bunch about social-emotional, um, way better than I can tell you, but just to let you know what's happening in kindergarten and high school as well, um, the Wolf Pack at Wolf Swamp had a meeting earlier, uh, last week to crown their kindergarteners, that makes them feel like part of their Wolf Swamp community. They all meet in the auditorium and welcome kindergarteners into the school. Um, our WTE meeting is October 26th, Stephanie. Uh, we're going to start the season off with the topic of balance, uh, for our students, for our staff, for our parents, because I think it's what we've been hearing is a challenge for lots of us. So, we'll keep you posted on what we discover and learn about that. All of our new employees and our subs are taking the Enough Abuse, um, online training, so they're all in the process of that. Last year, we got all of our staff, um, to do that. I think all of our staff, custodians, office staff, everybody. And, um, this year, we've started to capture them, the employees that kind of come in on a substitute basis or all the new ones that we added. So, we're, we're doing that as far as, uh, that. Then, um, differentiation of curriculum, the middle school, middle school's busy this year. Middle School ELA has an awesome committee to take a look at literacy and, um, create what they're calling a literacy positive environment to get kids like loving reading, interested in reading, they have great ideas. So, we met for about a half a day last week about their thoughts and ideas and how we'll move towards that. Maybe their makerspace might make some little mailboxes or, um, library boxes to have around the school so kids don't have to go to the actual library to pull books out so that things are more accessible. And then, uh, the RTI process, we are talking about that, um, at all schools also, again, comparing kind of what we're doing and trying to refine them so that the elementary schools are, um, dealing with RTI in the same way, from the referral system to the services that kids can get to the release of services. So, that's in progress. Another, uh, great thing I think is we use Ames Web, Beautiful Screener, Universal Screener. If you have, uh, elementary kids, you've heard kids complaining potentially about this. Screener, especially at the younger grades, they take a paper-based test and they sit with their teachers and it's a long process, 20 minutes or more sometimes for, um, math for kindergarten. So, our math specialists took it upon themselves to do some research on other tools and they came across the Boulder Valley School District Screening Tool, which is free, so that's Tom's favorite price, right? And they did a, a group, they, they, they screened a group of students who took the Ames Web and we caught some weaknesses. And so, we screened those same group of students really quickly after and really caught the same weaknesses with the Boulder Valley. It's a much shorter screening tool, um, kids are kind of in and out. And so, I think, uh, at elementary, their recommendation, I think we're gonna start is using the Boulder Valley, uh, for the rest of this year at least at kindergarten. So, that's really helpful to get kids away from the assessment table. Curriculum alignment. History and Social Studies is, uh, the main focal point for this year, which I keep talking about. I know we met today with our curriculum leaders on that and talked about mapping out a pre-K through 12 scope and sequence. There are a couple of years at sixth and seventh that, um, we're gonna have to grapple with as to how we're going to do that. And then again at the high school, because we're pushing a whole new world history in one class to the high school, which you'll probably miss, Reggie. But, um, so they're realigning things and, um, along with that realignment, we'll be looking for texts. We'll hope to purchase texts for civics in eighth grade next year. Um, I think they probably already know what they want, but they'll do some research on some other, there are not that many texts out there. But, uh, some cool things, uh, cool news in civics is that Rebecca Townsend, um, has been, came in to talk to Marty and I earlier this year and right now she's working with Will Sullivan, he's the eighth grade teacher at Williams, to work with his classroom on, um, civics in relation to the fall town meeting. So, he and Rebecca have been talking. Uh, I think at this point, um, he wants his students to go to the town meeting, but to go with some meaning behind it. So, Rebecca is coming to do an assembly for eighth graders, I think this Friday, at, at Williams. So, um, kids are interested and she's really, um, excited about doing that as well. So, thank you Rebecca, if you'll listen. Uh, let's see, our mentor teacher program is underway. This is a huge thing I don't talk about too often, but we have new teachers every year who are brand-new. So, they have to, uh, be assigned a mentor and they work, uh, after-school lots and sometimes during school and their mentors will observe, they'll meet with them, they'll talk with them about, you know, challenges that they had. They might sit down with their mentor and say, "Well, you know, this student did this, this is how I responded, you know, what might I have done differently?" Or, um, they might say, "I can't find the creamer in the lunchroom." I mean, it's like everything from soup to nuts for our new teachers and it's really, really helpful. And we have two new nurses this year who are also taking part in the mentoring program. MCAS scores are out, been sent home to families. Uh, we are all digging into those results right now, just, uh, kind of looking deep into our growth scores and our other scores to see, um, how kids fare, why they fare, things like that. So, we'll be back to, I think, the 23rd. I don't know, we'll have time on that agenda for that. But, um, if you have specific questions in relation to MCAS that you wanna have answered during that time, email Marty and I about that, that would be great. PD. So, we have tons of stuff on the, um, Fire right now for PD. We have lots of folks going out for PD. Uh, we have a threat assessment protocol that we're looking at on the admin team. We're gonna do some tabletop activities or some, some scenarios with that and then we'll probably bring it to you to show it to you. I had talked about the sexual abuse awareness. Uh, some of our staff are going to the Undoing Racism Workshop that actually, um, Kind Parent has decided to support some folks going and we're supporting some ourselves. Uh, we have a leadership workshop in Boston that some of our admins are going to. Uh, a good portion of that is on social-emotional learning. And we have some folks going out to science and, uh, social science and history also at the elementary and middle school level. And most importantly, Rick Wormley's coming here November 13th. So, he will talk to all the grade levels during the school day, but he's coming to the community in the evening, I think at 7:00. And I hope that we can fill the auditorium. So, if we could get that out there, even if you could invite staff or anything, he'll give a great talk on kind of, um, making, how parents can help make kids learn for the love of learning, right? Maybe you can say it better than I can say it.
No, I do so well.
But that's kind of, that's kind of right, what we were guiding him towards. And during the day, he'll talk about standard-based grading and differentiation and inclusion. So, he's really an awesome speaker. I highly encourage everybody to attend. Tweet, Facebook, whatever it takes. I think that's it.
Thanks, Sue. Yeah, I'm looking forward to, to Rick coming on the 13th. I think we all can do our part to get that message out. I think it'd be great.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Does anyone have any other follow-up or comments or questions on Sue's report?
So, is that history class, is it for, is it new in terms of like curriculum or like textbook?
In civics?
No, no, the, the world history one.
The US history, well, um, yes, you'll need new tests at the high school for that 'cause you don't teach it now. It used to be taught in the eighth grade. And now, eighth grade's getting civics. So, world history has to get pushed somewhere else and it can't go down to six or seven, so it has to come up to the high school.
Okay.
So, probably gonna be world history one, world history two, US history in those.
What is it right now for pressure?
Uh, it is US two and then world.
Okay.
So, you're, you're closer to it?
Yeah, I had honors and we did world, so that's why I was confused.
So then, as a freshman?
Yeah, as a freshman.
So, it's world one, then I maybe it's, uh, US history, then world two. I don't, yeah, I'm not sure. I can't remember the sequence. I just looked at it today and I can't remember it.
No, seniors, um, you don't have to take history, but you can take, uh, AP European or, um, there's an Asian history class now.
Yeah, media and societies, counseling and history.
And like music history.
There's quite a few.
Yeah, there's fun.
Quite a few history elective. Right now, um, LHS requires three history credits to graduate. So, another thing that I think the committee will grapple with will be, is that adequate? Or do we wanna require students to take more than a three credit?
Three courses.
Three courses.
Three courses, yeah. And I think the, uh, Sue organized a meeting of some social studies leaders across the district today and, and we were chatting a little bit about the civics emphasis and the new framework. And I think it complements SEL really nicely because it sort of, it encourages kids to get into real-world situations to apply their learning. And, and what Will Sullivan doing is sort of maybe at the, at the tip of a, a larger iceberg of some ways that we can get kids more actively involved in the community and, and develop their civic-mindedness. I think that really fits in nicely with the, the whole SEL direction that we're heading in, so.
There's a civic, uh, framework that goes all the way through pre-K through 12. So, not, it's taught specifically in eighth grade, US civics and national civics, but the, the civic-mindedness piece of it is pre-K through 12, so.
Right. And I would just piggyback on Marty's comment by saying, um, it's really nice to have a community member like Dr. Rebecca Townsend come into our schools, um, and engage kids through town meeting. That's a, um, I think it's always great when we have somebody who's in that capacity, can come in and, and reach out to kids and partner with, with teachers. So, I really do appreciate her, um, doing the assembly. That's great news.
That's awesome.
Okay, anything else that anyone wants to add?
I'd say I like the format, linking it to the.
You like the format?
Yeah, I do.
That's good. All right, I'll take it.
Linking it to the goals.
Trying, yeah.
Yeah, I like that it's set up a different way and categorized.
I'm gonna, this way for like maybe three more meetings and see what I got.
I do not have an official chair report this evening, so we can move on to our student representative report, if you have anything.
I don't have anything different from what we mentioned earlier, but I'll just reiterate for the camera that, um, that the stuff with like the parking lot, there's like definitely a way we could do it better and, um, I think, uh, our student engineer, Glenn Byevsky, is definitely on the right track. So, looking forward to that.
Thank you. And Mr. Mazza, don't think that you're off the hook. When I have five bullet points, sometimes I skip one.
It's all right.
If Karen had pointed it out, I wouldn't, would've found that.
Thanks Karen.
Senior anyway over there. So, feel free to update us on your finance.
I will be brief. We met with head custodians, Marty, myself and John Clunin, kind of a, as a check-in, we do it periodically throughout the year, uh, discuss some of the events during the summer for cleaning and preparation for opening. Uh, we also provided them with some self-audit checklist as a way to do a walkthrough of the building to minimize any hazards. It's done in conjunction with the OSHA safety standards being applied to municipalities in the last few years. So, uh, we're gonna attempt to kind of be proactive with this self-audit. Eventually, we'll have a representative from our insurance carrier come out and walk the building with us to see if there are any issues that need, um, more attention than what we already addressed. We also had a safety and security meeting on September 28th, 28th. Representatives from LPD and LFD and DPW were there. The police department talked about the training that is done annually for staff in regards to active shooter or hostile intruder. And they're updating their presentation based on some new training that they attended recently. So, they will be scheduling those in, uh, late fall and early winter to get out to all of the buildings. We also had a discussion in regards to the family reunification plan and, uh, a pretty extensive document that was put together in draft form that will be working with the administration from each of the schools and representatives from police and fire. I believe in, uh, October 17th, we have, at our admin meeting, uh, we'll be coming together to kind of review that, provide input from the administrators in regards to the plan, uh, with the hopes of trying to run some sort of exercise in regards to reunification, at least sometime later this year. And then, um, we also are moving forward with the See Something, Say Something program. We hope to have the initial training done sometime late October, which will be for the program administrators, myself, Marty and Nick George, and also for police department personnel, the dispatch and first responders. And eventually, there'll be more training for administrators throughout the district. Students and parents will also be participating in some, uh, online training in regards to the program. Uh, the high school experienced a little plumbing leak at the top of the main staircase. At the landing, there was a, a split unit that is up in the ceiling. The, uh, drain was, uh, tied into some plumbing that ended up leaking, causing some water on the inside of the sheet rock there. So, on Friday after school is dismissed, the, there was some demolition, removal of the, the sheet rock, um, given an opportunity to dry out and eventually it will be, new sheet rock will be installed and painted. So, right now, I believe it's covered just with some plastic till it is completely dried out. And then our food, uh, food service advisory committee, our first meeting is scheduled for October 23rd at 1:00 PM. If anybody at home watching would like to join us, we would love to have you. So, it will be, I believe, in room 12 here at the district offices. And that is it.
Thank you. We can move on to our subcommittee reports now and finished with you and we'll write that at you. Um, so Finance Subcommittee.
You wanna take out? You tell me, whichever you want.
Go ahead.
Uh, so, we did meet, um, on October 2nd. The first item on the school committee's agenda is a building use request. Center School PTO has submitted a request for the Halloween Hustle, which is an annual event scheduled for October 27th from 7:00 to, 7:00 AM to noon, uh, using the high school, the center school cafeteria for their 5K run for awards and refreshments.
We did discuss that at our meeting. I don't know, it says it in our, um, I don't know if we made a.
It was recommended by the Finance Sub.
I can make the motion. Yeah, so we do have a recommended motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the building use request from the Center School PTO to use Center Schools cafeteria on Saturday, October 27th, 2018 for their Halloween Hustle event as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? Armand?
Just everybody at home, uh, the t-shirts have not been made yet, so if you would like to donate to the Center School Halloween Hustle, you have your opportunity to do so on Friday.
Duly noted. Any other further discussion? So, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So, the motion passes.
Um, the next item, although this did not make it, was not received in time for the Finance Subcommittee agenda. The organizers of the Raise of Hope Walk have annually requested use of the high school and Blueberry parking lot to shuttle individuals who are participating in the walk over to Forest Park. So, Finance Sub was not able to discuss or make a recommendation, but it is something that has been approved in the past. It is scheduled for October 21st. I know they use the parking from, I believe, 7:00 in the morning until around 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. So, there is a recommend, uh, motion on the agenda for approval.
I can make the motion.
Sounds good.
I move that the school committee approve the request from the Raise of Hope to utilize the parking lots for, for Long Meadow High School and Blueberry Hill School on Sunday, October 21st, 2018 as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So, the motion passes.
And the next item is a, um, the, we had a discussion, representatives, two representatives, Mr. Rich Joseph and Mr. Steve Dudak were present to, uh, discuss with the committee the possibility of installing a wall ball over on Russell Field. It would be, uh, kind of centered, uh, stationed in the center of the fields towards the woods, uh, adjacent to Blueberry. In your packet is, uh, a diagram. It would be about 36 to 40 feet in length, I believe about 15 feet high. So, it would, uh, be, would run perpendicular to, uh, Bliss Road. The belief and hope would be that it would be available for use for, uh, the soccer teams, um, I believe lacrosse, maybe field hockey. They anticipate the cost would be anywhere from 50,000 to 80,000 dollars. And we had some discussion about being that it's town property, it really would require the approval of the select board. It's a permanent structure, probably have to go to, uh, the planning board also and, uh, receive the necessary permits. So, but, um, it did, I believe the members who were there seemed to be supportive of the concept. And there is a, a motion to recommend, um, endorsing the proposal, be it that, since it's not school property, even though it is used, uh, by our athletic program.
I could say I asked the question about the re- recurring annual cost that's on the sheet that you're looking at as 3,000 to 5,000. It's an estimated cost for painting, but I don't believe that was believed to be annual. But, when it comes to painting, maybe, you know, it appears to be that much over a five-year period. I have no idea. I, I, there wasn't really a, a basis for that amount except painting, right?
Yeah, it sounded like he was gonna have to go back and do a little bit more work on how much the annual cost would be and then how much the refurbished cost would be every three to five years. Cause they did say the paint, I think, was expensive, but weren't really clear on that.
And there weren't any other costs other than painting that?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Karen, you had something?
Um, I was just going to ask, will this be, um, taking any of our field space? Like, will it be?
Michael, uh, the athletic director was present at the meeting. He did not feel that this would impede on any of the s- field space. It would not limit. It would not limit necessarily how they lay them out. So there would still, I believe, he said, maybe 15 feet from the end line to where the wall would be from the layout for the soccer fields.
Armand?
Stephanie, we were talking about the recurring costs. Were they talking about like some type of a downwind to pay for that? Or are they expecting that to come out of operational budget?
That would be, that would be from the town. I think they would be responsible.
That was my understanding too, that they were looking for, once the donation is made, that then the maintenance would be on the town for upkeep. There was also conversation about lighting it so that there could be, one, reduce any kind of vandalism, but also for use after dusk. Although that was not included in the cost estimate that came with on their sheet. So, but it was discussed at Finance Sub.
Bronwyn, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to follow up on Karen's question about how close it's gonna be to the fields. You say about 15 feet?
Yeah, that was my recollection based on our conversation.
You said, you know how they changed the layout of the fields? You said with both layouts in mind, it was gonna be far enough away. That's the way the athletic director thought it.
I was just wondering if this is probably over the top, but if they needed to maybe like cover the corners or something in case there were people from the field that.
It would probably depend on how close it really is.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I did ask that same question. A soccer player running at the end of the field or on the sidelines to make sure that they wouldn't collide with the end of the wall. But at the time, Michael Capitasso did feel that there would be sufficient space from the end line to.
In between area so that it wouldn't be in danger of anyone on the field.
Yeah, I think out of the, when they looked at all of Russell Field, it really is in the best spot where it doesn't impede field play and it really is along that tree line. So if you're, if you were to drive around there, I think right now there may be, gosh, I want to say it's to the right of the scoreboard that's down this end by the baseball field just to orient people. And I believe there's not, there's underutilized soccer goals along the woods area. So that would be the area that they're thinking about, which is the least impact to any sports that are going on right there.
So we have a motion, I can make a motion to endorse the proposal and then it's ultimately up to the select board and I think it would probably go to the planning board too. So I move that the school committee endorse the proposal to install a wall ball structure on Russell Field.
Second. Any further discussion? Armand?
Yeah, I will just be voting no. I just want upfront to be said, I do not believe in perpetual gifts, perpetual maintenance of gifts to the town. And so just as a standard, I, it's something I've held to. So it's my feeling, sorry.
No, don't apologize. Any other further discussion? So we can call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So the motion passes to endorse, knowing that we'll go in front of the select board and planning board. Our last is the capital projects.
So you have in front of you a four-page document regarding capital projects. On page one, items that are prioritized, 1 through 9, ended up being the prioritized list that Finance Sub has recommended to school committee. We had some dialogue in regards to what criteria is used for determining what projects are prioritized. And we, Stephanie did some work and tried to break them down into categories. And I think from a, looking at it, we try to think about from a continuity of operation and a safety perspective of projects that are most impactful. So, so we most certainly had some discussion, not only about the top nine, but some of the other projects that weren't prioritized. And we are gathering some additional information that we'll bring back to Finance Sub regarding to some of the other projects. But, so the projects you have in front of you are the prioritized order. We did talk about the total allocation that is appropriated for capital, which I believe it's around $1.8 to $2 million annually. Out of that figure, about a million dollars is appropriated or set aside for pavement, sidewalks, guardrails annually. So that doesn't leave a large dollar amount for capital projects. For, we historically received funding for anywhere from one to four projects off of our prioritized list. So this list will go to the town manager once school committee approves it. He will incorporate all of the requests from across all town departments and send that over to capital planning committee, which will vet the projects at some point. I'll go and speak to our requests. They will make a recommendation to the select board, which then ultimately decide on what projects get onto the town, the warrant article for town meeting in the spring. So I don't know if you would like me to go through each one of them or if you want to ask any questions of myself and members of the Finance Sub in regards to how we came up with our prioritized list.
Yeah, I think we've had the packet and people can see and look at the list, so I don't think you need to go through them all. But I would open it up to questions and comments if anyone had a question on how we got to that, please. Stephanie?
I can also say, so I went through the list and some of the categories that I grouped everything into, one of them was safety. So anything that I felt could, you know, pose a safety risk or would interrupt the school day for students, I put under there. Then I also had a category of roads, fields, technology and then building. And then a couple of things I thought might fall under community preservation. So then when I had the long list of the safety issues, we had Tom Maza there and, uh, Maza, Mar- Mario, sorry. And went through those and talking about what are we looking at? Does it pose a safety issue? Is it something that's imminent? So really went through them and I feel comfortable with what we have here. In the past, I didn't have a sense. I really thought, you know, safety should always be at the top and I still do. So it was nice to be able to go through all those items that I felt like they impact student safety and hear about them.
Karen?
Does the, if we look into the Mass School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program, will that impact this list at all?
It could. I don't know if it'll impact the projects that are prioritized for FY '20. Some of the criteria that Marty was speaking about specifically to the boilers that are on our project don't meet the threshold at this point. And so a decision would have to be made, can we survive till they are eligible and meet the criteria and the condition they're in. And I think there are some concerns with, from DPW in regards to waiting a couple of years to have those projects receive funding. The timeline was about 18 months for an accelerated repair project in terms of the SOI and review and approval and design and all of, you know, all that goes into it.
Okay. Bronwyn?
I wasn't gonna ask about the prioritized list. I was gonna ask about under Blueberry versus playground enhancements. I can't remember what the group was called. Someone had given a donation. Would that be able to be impeded? It looked like it wasn't enough, I remember. Community.
Oh, the CPA money?
Yeah. So there was a project that was approved, I believe it was maybe a year and a half ago, for development of a field in the back of Blueberry. I believe it was $40,000 or $50,000. From the work that DPW has done going out to bid, I believe they have pricing of anywhere from $150,000 to $275,000 for, to put a field in there. So the allocation that is currently available for that project is not sufficient for it to move forward at this time.
Thank you.
Bronwyn, I could, that was one of the things I put under possible community preservation funds for Blueberry and also possibly, maybe it's a stretch, but the playground beds at Wolf Swamp. And I think the deadline for that is, I mean, I don't.
Sure. I think it's sometime in November.
Yeah, I think so. So if that's something we want to pursue, those two might be good ones.
What do we know about these?
I believe there's an application on the website in terms of the project and, you know, description of what it is, pricing in terms of how you came up with your price. There's a quote and then, like they weigh that, their funds are allocated into three or four different pots that they have to spend it on. So, but I believe capital planning and the community preservation committee kind of work hand in hand in terms of reviewing projects. So if they, maybe we're submitted for capital but might fit the criteria for community preservation, they'll share that information with them for a possible consideration.
And I think most of that information is available like on the town website.
I guess I was just wondering, like, should someone be tasked with doing that? Or like if, like Stephanie said, the deadline is soon?
I think that in the past, I think we've had Center School done and most recently Wolf Swamp was through those funds and it does come from the school. I can't remember the genesis of it. If it's something the school committee voted on, if it was on our capital projects list and that's how we then moved it over there.
Yes. So you, if we've submitted a project through the prioritized list, then the town manager would then potentially direct that request over to cap, community preservation instead of through the capital process for funding.
But it's not to say an individual resident can't do it because that's how the fields were done too. So if there's a resident out there who wants it done, they can submit that and then ultimately it could come to the school committee and we could endorse it or not. But, you know, it can come through an individual too.
Thanks. Any other follow-up or comments? Okay, so we do have the recommended motion in terms of the capital projects.
Oh, yeah, hold on. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved that prioritized FY '20 capital projects list dated October 9th, 2018.
Second. Any further discussion? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So the motion passes. And that will wrap up Finance Subcommittee's work and we can move into the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay, so Policy Sub met on October 1st with the goal of looking over some of our policies regarding public complaints, more specifically Policy KE, KEE and KEB. We did not end up looking at KAC. And then in addition, we are still looking at the BEDG regarding the note that was added by MSAC to that policy. So first, I'll start with the public complaints. We are presenting tonight some amendments to Policy KE and KEB. You have the revisions in front of you. More specifically, where our old policy ended anonymous complaints will be disregarded. We have added the following conditions in which there will be an exception made. Number one, those committed by the law statute. Number two, those associated with an imminent health or safety matter. And number three, those selected as part of a district or school sponsored anonymous survey. So those three exceptions are added to both KE, which is public complaint, and KEB, public complaints about school personnel. Then, these policies will be posted to the school committee website for the next 30 days to solicit public input. After the 30-day period pending school committee approval, the Policy Subcommittee is recommending removal of the statement regarding anonymous letters from the school committee's webpage, which states that anonymous correspondences will be disregarded. So we will remove that and we will use Policy, two policies that we updated as our guide while addressing anonymous letters. So any questions on this aspect?
I'd just like to say I do like the change and the exceptions put in here about the anonymous complaints. I think that makes sense. And is to everyone's benefit.
Yeah, I will second Stephanie's sentiments and I'm glad that that was addressed in Policy Sub so that our, our policy now reflects our practices. And I think that's important to bring all that into alignment. So thanks for the work on that.
Secondly, we're still just looking for some clarification on the notes to minutes. We've got calls out to Flynn Kucha and our attorney. And we have received some feedback, but we'll be discussing that at our next meeting. And that's appropriate to discuss it tonight. Marty?
No, I think, yeah, I think it's sort of, we're trying to understand the balance between taking meaningful minutes and not making it a transcript. So that's the question that we put out in response to that modification to Policy BEDG that the MASC had recommended, so.
So we should have some information for you at our next meeting. Which is, so far, October 15th. Steph?
Can I just say, I appreciate your looking into that because as clerk, I'm particularly interested in it. I've always felt that the minutes are tough because if it's not a complete transcript, then it's hard to make sure that you're, you're fully representing the meeting and everything that everybody said. So I'm very curious as to any legal reference to that as well as MASC's practice. So both of them, I'd be interested in getting information on. So thank you for looking into that.
As our secretary last year, I definitely concur with that. We could use some clarification on that.
Yeah.
So I think that's it. Gonna meet on the 15th, as I mentioned. Start the next topic, we'll be looking at transportation of our athletes. And well, actually, throw an extra pick though, so that's what we'll be tackling next.
Thank you, Melanie. Does anyone have any further follow-up or questions regarding Policy Sub?
We have a motion that needs to go for the last, the last one we didn't hit. Oh, you did it.
Oh, right. We didn't hit the 30-day mark with the last one, so we had to, we.
We did.
You did it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we did, we proved those to be the votes.
We did.
But thank you for honoring me.
We can move on if Ryan wants to give a quick update on Evaluation Sub?
We discussed also many minutes in Evaluation Sub, so I too am looking forward to that answer because I've done both now, trying to write down every single thing that was said and this week, our last week, a much more brief minutes. We, the superintendent led the discussion by presenting the changes to his plan. We asked clarifying questions. The discussion, I think, was fruitful and in the end, made a recommendation to approve the plan, which I believe is up next.
Yeah, it's a good segue into Superintendent's annual plan. So Dr. O'Shea is going to go ahead and revisit his presentation.
Okay. That cooperates for me. So I only have, you've seen enough PowerPoint slides tonight, so I only have one slide that I want to use to illustrate some of the changes. So I appreciate the partnership with the Evaluation Subcommittee as we've worked to refine the plan. And I hope you see that it is both aligned with a lot of the work that has been talked about by our middle school team, our high school team last week and the elementary schools next week, but also aligned with some of the goals discussions that the school committee has recently had. So there are, I included two copies of the plan in your packet. One shows tracks the changes and one shows all the changes accepted. Some people like to see. Some people like to see the changes, some people don't, so they're both there for you. There's a couple of things that I, the most sort of overarching comment I could make in terms of some of the adjustments that have been made relate to that question about data and how will we know what works? And so I want to just draw your attention, if I could, to the question around how will we know what works, particularly with regard to SEL? And so this is a version of a slide that I presented to the evaluation subcommittee, and just want to hit a couple of things here. So there's, there's a, this middle slide here represents, I think, an important revision to the plan, and hopefully captures some of the feedback that came out of the last school committee meeting and certainly out of the evaluation subcommittee. So in that, the language from the plan says, lead the administrative team, the identification of high-leverage indicators or assessment practices that will measure student proficiency and SEL competencies. And so when we talk about the SEL competencies, I hope it's becoming clear that we're really zeroing in on the castle competencies, the castle framework. So I apologize for the jargon here, high leverage indicators, assessment practice, but basically, we want to zero in on the measurements that we think will, will help us gauge student competency in SEL in the most important ways. And so you'll see, interestingly, what's kind of gelling over the last few weeks is the alignment between the annual goals that are before you in my plan, but also, we had a rich discussion with the school committee, where the school committee had talked about supporting the identification and the use of benchmarks to measure and report on the district's success in promoting academic excellence and the well-being of students. So the school committee is, seems to be interested in supporting our work, which is really encouraging in terms of identifying important benchmarks. So important benchmarks, high leverage indicators, and then, I hope what you're hearing at the school level is, you know, the school-based benchmark development, what are the schools looking at in terms of measuring SEL competency? And so you'll, you'll hear when the, when the elementary principals meet with you in a couple of weeks, you'll hear about their interest in aligning the proficiency indicators on the standards-based report card with the castle competencies. You heard Nicole Allen tonight and Neil Guyall talk about some castle tools that are coming out very soon in terms of measuring student proficiency. We're increasingly interested in, have increasingly been using student surveys to kind of help us understand how students are self-reporting about how they feel about their own growth and development, how they feel about their connectedness to the school, how they feel about whether or not there were adults there to support their growth and learning. And then increasingly, MCAS school climate data, we're expecting probably sometime in November, Sue might help me out, grades five, eight, and 10, we're going to see some of the school climate data. You'll recall that that, those were part of the MCAS reports last year, but DESI cautioned us very strictly about the use of that school climate data, because they too, like us, they're also in the process of refining their, their survey tools that are attached to the MCAS. So I wanted to sort of highlight this as, really to emphasize that alignment across all levels, and then certainly you can go a lawyer below this, right, and talk about, you know, what's happening at the classroom level to promote and identify SEL competency in students. So that, it sort of struck me in the middle of the, the school committee goals workshop that there seems to be a lot of arrows that are properly lining up in this area. And so you'll see that, that middle slide there, that middle row is the verbiage from my plan, and again, trying to identify, you know, and select the most effective, the most formative assessments that we possibly can to help us understand student competency in this area. And when we talk about that, we can talk about it at the individual student level, we can talk about it at the school level, and then at the district level. So the indicators that we can look at, I listed some of them there, but certainly there's the YRBS tool, which we just started introducing at the eighth grade last year, and we're interested in kind of refining the questions there as well. There's even universal screening tools that you can take a look at to identify student SEL competency. You know, we have some hesitation there, but it's something that we want to learn a little bit more about. So that's an important kind of part of the evolution of this plan, and I just wanted to highlight that. The other thing is, I just would call your attention to the last two pages, and the last two pages are an attempt to capture some of the important action steps that we believe need to happen in this school year in order to really advance our district improvement plan. So the, the action steps that you see there tie into the district improvement plan, which I think we included in your packet. So the bullets there are lifted largely from the district improvement plan. There's a couple of, couple of nuances there and a couple of new points of emphasis, but largely they're, they come directly from the plan. So for example, in under curriculum alignment, the establishment of a parent curriculum advisory council, that's from the district improvement plan. The creation of a curriculum planning guide, again, from the district improvement plan, and that's something that we made some headway on last year, and we want to make more headway on this year. The, the alignment work associated with the middle school ELA group that Sue mentioned, the social studies work that's underway, all those are important action steps for us this year. And it's not to say that's everything, but it's really some of the key high-leverage steps that we think need to take place. And then with regard to differentiation, there were melee training, we've got a core of teachers that are headed out to do some professional development and co-teaching that Jean Fontaine has identified. So those are some of the, the key action steps from that district improvement plan. And then when you look at the social-emotional learning goal, you know, you'll see the district-wide training, culturally responsive practice, the middle school Botvin life skills curriculum, we're excited about that. That's being fueled by that Project Here grant that has given us some prevention resources for our middle school students. So I won't read you everything, but those action steps link to the district improvement plan. A couple other things, and then I would love to hear your feedback or questions. One of them is, there was some question about the, the choice of the indicators, and so you recall, the, the DESI rubric provides the indicators that are identified in this plan. And so one of the indicators that is under component one, and I'll just draw your attention to page three, so it's an indicator relating to instructional leadership, and the indicator is how, as an educational leader, I can promote the learning and growth of all students by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning a central focus of schooling. And then the indicator, the indicator there is data-informed decision-making, uses multiple sources of evidence. And so by including, the reason I included this indicator, and I appreciate the question on this one, is that there's some qualitative data that I really believe we can get from some of the action steps that are in component one, right? So the qualitative feedback that we can get from a parent advisory council, the qualitative feedback that we can get from the staff and community survey that, that we want to relaunch, this is a district-wide survey, we want to relaunch that in January, the qualitative feedback that we can receive through even the, the conversation series that I introduced to you at your last meeting. So there's plenty of opportunities to get feedback from parents who've got some good insights to say, here's where we think you're making progress, here's where we think there's room to grow, here's where there's opportunities to create better alignment across classrooms, across grades, here's where we think we can invest some resources, so that's really important to have those, to use that data to inform the decisions we make about, about teaching and learning. So I wanted to highlight that indicator as well, and then you'll notice a handful of changes on the school safety action steps, and so what you'll see there is, what I was trying to convey was that we're really always looking to stay current and fresh when it comes to school safety, and so that there's a lot of emerging practices that we talk about frequently with the administrative team, that we talk to police and fire about, and so those emerging practices might relate to reunification, those emerging practices might relate to threat assessment protocols, Sue mentioned that earlier, right? The emerging practices might relate to how we respond to armed intruders, or how we train staff to respond to armed intruders. So those, trying to convey that, those school safety action steps are built on what we've done in the past, but they're also heading us in some important new safe directions, and always with a partnership between the district and public safety, between the district and police and fire. So those are, those are some of the tweaks that you'll see under school safety. I would mention, if you're curious about it, you'll see that I qualified our use of CopSync. So you recall that CopSync is this sort of real-time notification system that staff would have access to, so if they have, they see an intruder in the building, they could jump on a device, district-owned device, and, and it will, information about that would pop up in real time to police dispatch and to all staff. So right now, we are evaluating whether or not CopSync is still the right tool for us. And Nick St. George, Tom Mazza and I have been in conversation with each other and with CopSync to see if, in fact, this tool still makes sense for us. But the bottom line is, we're still interested in sort of that immediate notification system, whether it's CopSync or another tool that's out there. So I just wanted to, to qualify that, that action step on the plan. So there's certainly more to it, it's a dense plan, lots of action steps, I believe it's ambitious, I believe it's lined up with our district goals, I believe it's lined up with our school goals, and I believe it's lined up with the school committee goals that, that have been in development as well. So appreciate the, the support of the evaluation subcommittee, and anxious to continue the work that's identified in the plan. Open any questions or comments?
Stephanie, lead us off?
So I had, I appreciate your talking about the standard one instructional leadership and the value of the qualitative data, which I think is very useful, and I do see that as one very important data source. The issue I take, and I had my suggestion, was to just get rid of standard one for this component one, because the indicator specifies the use of quantitative data, specifically state, district, and school assessment results and growth data, which would be quantitative, and I don't see anything that relates to that in the actions and intended outcomes. With that said, I thought that you could just get rid of standard one there because you have it in the next component on student learning, but when I go to assess the correlation to this, I won't have any quantitative data to, to relate it to.
Right. I think...
I can, but I'm, that's just mine.
Yeah.
You can take it or leave it, and I had let you know of that before, so I do appreciate your explaining that a little further, and, and I continue to kind of have trouble with that, but that's just, that's just me. There are a couple of words that I also brought up to your attention, the high leverage indicators. I'm trying to figure out how, what that means and how it differs from another kind of indicator. And then there was the use of nascent data, which I'm, I'm unfamiliar with too, so when talking about these things, I was trying to get a sense of, of what they actually are.
Yeah, the apologies for the, the jargon, I think when, when I use that phrase, high leverage is sort of, you'd sort of measure what's important to you, right? And so how can we select, identify and select the most important ways to measure student SEL competency? And, and that's, I think, what I hope you've heard reflected in the conversations with the, with the teams that you've, you've heard over the last couple of weeks is, so that high leverage thing is, let's, let's pick the indicators that, that are important to us as a school district that are lined up with all of our other goals, and presumably the, the theory is that if you're, you're measuring those things that are important to us, that they will give us the leverage to grow and improve. So that, that was the, the use of that term. The nascent indicators, again, I really just saying, there's a lot of emerging indicators. There's, you know, we're seeing emerging indicators from the, from the survey data, we're seeing emerging data from the castle competencies, castle standards. So I think we will have, hopefully by the end of this year, have even a stronger focus on these emerging data points, but then even have, but more importantly, we're going to be able to have identified the benchmarks that we want to use, you know. There's a few different ways of describing that, whether we talk about benchmarks or assessment practices, or indicators of success, but we want to zero in on those things that we think will give us important information about kids and their well-being and their social, emotional growth. So, yeah, my apologies for the nascent term, but that, it doesn't, it really, it's not meant to connect to any, I don't know, any DESI standard.
Emerging, is that...
Emerging is probably, emerging is probably a more accessible word.
Relevant type, okay.
Relevant, emerging.
Just a little time.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I have to look it up. Well, if I couldn't find it, so too.
Yeah, and so I would just say, I mean, it would be my recommendation to just get rid of the jargon, because it doesn't make sense to me from a research perspective, so I would just get, I would just get rid of it, and then it makes sense, especially when the data, I was trying to figure, are you talking about data that's not there, or it's something that's not there, or, so you have data or you don't have data. I think, based on the context of this, so I think it just makes, it would make sense just to get rid of it, I don't think it's necessary, but it's, it's not a big deal. But I was trying to get clarification, because I thought we were going to have the data from the youth risk behavior survey and the school council survey, is correct, we're going to have that, it's going to be able to be analyzed and looked at.
Yes.
So, okay, so I think it, if that's the case, then it, it won't be emerging, am I right? It'll be there.
It will be there, yes.
Okay.
It will be there.
All right. And then I just had one other question. Can you speak to what's being done to, I think one of the most difficult things when you're talking about social-emotional learning is making sure that everybody's on the same page as to what it is, and I know on the district improvement plan, part of that is, one of the objectives is to advance the staff's understanding of the principles and practices of social-emotional learning, to make sure that everybody from elementary to high school understands, and that's a, you know, one of the, one of the challenges of it. So I was wondering, and you kind of need that base in order to move forward, so I was wondering if there was anything in this that's going to address that? was wondering if there was anything in this that's going to address that. I saw there's PD, but it's not so much on CASL, so I didn't know if you could speak to that a little bit.
So I think that's where I play a critical role, and sort of, and I think you, you really were helping me out with the answer, it's, it's the idea of alignment, right? So I think, you know, when we, when we sit down, say when Sue and I sit down to think about professional development, or curriculum planning teams, or summer curriculum work, like, it doesn't get out the door unless it's lined up with our plans, right? It's like, no, like, we, we have limited resources, limited time. So I think that's, that's an important part of it. And so that's one of the ways that we're trying to advance, advance the staff's understanding. I think it also goes to my expectations, right? So in a month or so, you're going to hear or see school improvement plans. My firm expectation will be that, that they're lined up with the district improvement plan and that they're, so you're going to see SEL components, you're going to see a commitment to SEL PD in all of those plans. It's, it's, it's the SEL committees that you heard about, new committee work, new planning work. So it's, it's really about promoting, so we've got five in-service professional development days, how do we use those days? And if we're serious about SEL, let's make, let's, and if we're serious about our district improvement goals, let's make sure that our work in those five days is lined up with that. So that's really how I would be pushing the staff and advancing our collective understanding of, of SEL.
Sue? Not my evaluation, but it might come up in my evaluation, so I can ask a question. Are you asking how we are specif, teaching the, specifically the CASL frameworks to our staff?
I think that when I look at CASL and some of what I'm seeing in the different plans that are, or different curriculum that, that the schools are using, I just want to make sure that everybody, and I think this is why it's an objective on the, on the district improvement plan, is, is aligned with what is social-emotional learning? I mean, it isn't somewhat of an abstract term. So some of the stuff that I'm, I'm seeing come back, I just think, I, I think it's important to make sure everybody understands-
So you know how to teach skills in isolation, right, to our students? You're looking for that evidence that we taught those skills in isolation to our staff so that they can generalize them to the-
That they know just that basic, what is social-emotional learning? What does that mean?
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and then you go into the CASL framework, but what does it mean? What does social-emotional learning? I mean, it is a new sort of concept, so-
Well, something we didn't really teach before.
Well, exactly, and I don't know that it was in, you know, when people went to school to become teachers, I don't know that it was a thing back then.
Just special.
Maybe, yeah, which is, that's a really important piece, because if they were taught it, then you can use that as the PD within the school. So that's what I was just looking for, like, where is that core going forward?
That explicit teaching.
To make sure that everybody's on the same page of what is SEL.
That's helpful.
So, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything that they'd like to add about the plan or ask?
I can just say I appreciate the changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say that I appreciate the changes, I, I would vote to approve the plan. My expectation would be that your focus remains on having that growth-minded mindset and using that data to inform decisions, and I would be looking, my expectation would be for the, the leadership role and defining that qualitative data and defining those indicators for our administrative team, which I think speaks to Stephanie's aligning of, are we all measuring the same and what are the outcomes? So that would be, I appreciate the changes as well.
Anyone else? So we do have a, a possible motion. I didn't know, Marty, if you wanted to address any of the feedback that you heard and keep the plan as-
No, I, I, I hope, I will change, I'll strike some jargon to make it a little more accessible, because I do plan to take this then and share it in some fashion with the administrative team. I think they know that there's not going to be any surprises in here, but I very explicitly want them to see what I've committed to because ultimately, we're all in this work together, so.
So would you like us to read the motion as presented or as amended? Just noting that you're going to strike some vocabulary, maybe, is all the, the minor change.
Yeah.
So if anyone wanted to address the motion?
I move that the school committee approve the superintendent's annual plan review as presented and dated October 9th, 2018.
Clear.
Any further discussion? So we'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So the motion passes?
Thanks so much.
Thank you for presenting, and that'll move into our new business. So we have some preliminary overnight field trip requests in your packet.
So this overnight field trip request, this is an annual request, this one is the middle school Quebec trip, and it would be planned for May 23rd, 25th through the 25th of 2019. It's Glenbrook Middle School, it's, to, ties in with the French curriculum at Glenbrook. And this is a preliminary approval only, and it would allow the middle school staff to move forward with planning and securing more firmly the travel itinerary, so.
Did anyone have any questions on the field trip?
I think it's both, I think it's both schools are going on the trip.
Both, I'm sorry.
My French-speaking children have all known and loved it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, my apologies, thank you.
So I'll definitely support it for the third guy, so he gets a shot at it, I want to.
So yes, Glenbrook and Williams?
That's right. Thank you.
Sure, if you'd like to read the recommended motion, that would be great.
I move that the school committee approve the preliminary request to secure places and make arrangements for students from Glenbrook and Williams Middle School to travel to Quebec City, Quebec, Canada in May 2019.
Clear.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? So the motion passes, and then we, to wrap up, we do have a recommended motion, if anyone would like to read it, so that we can move into executive session.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for, with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes from previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
So this does require a roll call vote if we-
In a second.
Oh, in a second, purposely jumping ahead.
Okay.
And a roll call vote, too.
I agree, aye.
Melanie Garcia, aye.
Beth Barron, aye.
Karen Moore, aye.
Stephanie Jazman, aye.
Brian Kelly, aye.
So that portion of our meeting is adjourned, and we'll wait for the all-clear.